So we will begin with a roll call.
Yes, in just a second.
Okay.
Dessert. You're so funny. I love it. All right. Brian Battle.
Here.
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Penny Casimir.
Here.
Gavin Newman.
Here.
Joe Ruffalo.
Here.
Mike Shackleton.
Yeah.
Angela Wilcox.
Now Angela's running a little late from due expected. If you'll rise and join us in the pledge. Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, good evening. Next on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No pressure. Seeing none, we'll declare public comment closed. Now, in our community, the whole, you know, we don't, as a reminder, we don't take action at these meetings. So we've got two discussion items. We began our budget planning process tonight, and then we want to reserve a little bit of time, I think, to go through some of the referendum information and some of the revisions that Brian and his staff have made in some of the documents. And I think some of that's time sensitive that we get to tonight, because I know Brian wants to start using it and distributing it in some venues. So, you know, at the same time, I know we're all worried about the weather, trying to get back to our families and stuff. So I'm hoping, right, that we can probably get out of here by 8:00, 8:30 would be my hope. So with that, why don't we dive into the budget planning discussion? As a reminder, you know, this is the beginning of our budget process, right, for the 2019, '20 school year. So we've gotten the, the CPI has come in, so we've got a little better sense on revenues. We'll start this planning process. And the most significant thing that'll come out of this discussion, right, is whether or not we need to direct Brian and his staff to do any cuts, right? There have been years in the past when, you know, the revenue and expenditure numbers get a little out of whack. It's usually when CPI goes in a lot lower than we anticipated for a while. And we've had times, you know, at this meeting where there was a big disconnect and the board has asked the staff to identify some significant cuts in staff and expense. So that really is one of the big things that we have to get out of tonight's conversation with the understanding that, you know, if we do have to go through that process, we've got to kind of, we try to get that done before March, so we meet the deadlines by law for reducing the burden. So, and I think Dave, you're all, you're all good to go on the PMA model, right? So as we go and start making changes, you'll be able to...
Should be able to hold them, and I intend to do so.
That's good. We are in your capable hands.
Yes, sir.
Now, in the papers in front of us, right, we have a copy of the, this would have been last year's, right? And look up there, up on the screen, you've got kind of this year's version, which will go out to 2024. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, so let's see. So this was last year's, right? And so we were kind of, you know, on the heels of the 2.1, we had forecasted out 2% as our planning number for CPI. I see, Dave, you've got the 1.9 up there.
That's correct.
Which is the actual that was reported this month for last calendar year.
That's correct. I also have, if you're interested, just a little chart that gives you an idea historically of where we are. So the bars represent the annual CPI increases year over year. And then there's a yellow, there's a green line that represents the 10-year average at 1.8%. And a red line only covers the last five years, showing over the last five years, the average has been even lower, 1.5%. So that's where we've been averaging. Predicting the future on CPI can be a little dicey. I did take a look at a few different sources, a couple domestic, one in the UK, just to get an idea about what they're looking at. And they're all looking at between now and 2023, basically a 2.1, a 2 to 2.1 typical average. Kiplinger was one of the ones I looked at. They were looking at 2.3. The others were looking at 2 or 2.1. So...
So they're forecasting higher than the last 10 years?
Correct. And, but not significantly different than what we've seen in the last three years. You know, get with two years of 2.1, this last year 1.9, primarily due to a drop in fuel prices toward the end of the year. But being right in that range, looking out over the future.
You're right. This number is driven in off life by the price of oil, which is hard to predict.
When you look back, how accurate are some of their predictions?
I don't have a prediction versus actual. It's not something I've ever kept. And recreating it now could be a challenge. It was a little harder to find some of the old predictions. So yeah, that's a great question. I just don't happen to have that. But that's, you know, it's something that's out there. There's so many factors around the world that can affect CPI within the US. Anything can go wonky. You know, something happening with China trade relations, and then all of a sudden, the economy gets wonky, and you end up with some unexpected outcomes. But I thought I'd share what I did have.
So history's showing a little bit lower than our 2%. Some current forecasting is showing a little higher than the 2%. I'm going to put you on the spot just as a point for discussion. Do you have a recommendation on where you would put this?
Yeah, comfortable with the 2 to 2.1% number. Yeah, tend to be a little bit more on the conservative side. I'd probably stay with 2. Rather than try to overestimate it and hope that CPI is a little higher, I'd likely plan for 2.
How do you want to react to that? Too high? Too low?
Just right.
You have a opinion?
I guess my opinion would be, obviously, as we look out over the next 12 months, I think we have a lot more visibility. Once you get out over 12 months, there's a lot of uncertainty as this expanding economy we've been in for the last decade. And I don't know if you can hold for, you know, the budgeting period we're looking at, a static number across all areas.
So how would you propose adjusting it?
Well, I think that, you know, the current year, I think we have a little bit of visibility here too, right, where we're looking at.
Are you okay with the 2% for the next one?
Yeah.
And then if you were going to adjust going out, how would you adjust?
I would probably come down 25 basis points in each one, but in each of the years. We've been in an expanding...
175, 175, or 175, 150?
I could probably talk to either, but I think that we should address the potential for that to take place in the out years.
We guess 10.
I think I'm comfortable staying at the 2, because I hear projections are coming up above 2. So, but I understand where you're coming from. I think the potential for it to go down is always there. Potential for it to go up is there as well. It's not a hill for me, though.
Any others?
I agree.
Don't know what else about this stuff.
How about this? Would you, and Angela, we're talking about CPI. Do you have any strong feelings on this?
I'll go to the experts.
I never heard of them. That's a problem.
Brian, you're an expert.
I don't know. Nobody's an expert on this. It's all a guess. Different...
I would just ask that we try to keep all of our projection numbers realistic, so that we're not becoming overly conservative and handcuffing ourselves for future boards.
So what do you feel about Gavin doing 175 and 175 instead of going down twice? That would make me a little more comfortable.
How about this? Let me make the suggestion. Let's keep, based on whatever, let's keep 2s in there, right? But then, you know, this is one of those ones that we can play around with when we get to the end. And we're looking at the curve, and let's see how sensitive it is and what it does to the curve. I'm going to play with some 175 and 175.
It's kind of what they get back, but yes.
Yeah.
What are the projections? I mean, I can see them right now, but is this what you hear in the finance...
Yeah, what Gavin reported is historically, you know, the 10-year and the 5-year, 1.8 and 1.6. You've looked at forecasts that were like 2.1 and 2.2, and you wanted 2.3. So history is lower than 2, forecasts are higher than 2. Okay, let's leave this. This next one, this tax levy change, this isn't an assumption. It's just kind of a calculation with new growth. Tax rate collection, we moved this up a couple of years ago to 99%. What are we running at?
Right about 99%.
Right about 99%? Would you suggest we maintain 99%?
I would.
I mean, we moved it down a couple of years ago, and then it came right, it stayed right at 99.
We've played around with between 98 and 99.
Yeah.
It's rounding, you know, it's rounding at 98.7. So, you know, it's right about 99.
How do you, do you feel like it's pretty accurate? I mean, I know that we had some issues with understanding early payments and, you know, some things like the appeals coming through. Is that impacting this number at all, though? Should we take that into consideration?
That's one of the reasons that it's not right at 100%. And Cook County is really the difficult county to estimate, some of the refunds and things that happen. So what we have is both some lower collections or some refunds, but then we also have past collections that come in and offset some of that. You know, it's really a question of how conservative the board wants to be. And, you know, right now, it's hard from the data that we've looked at to strongly recommend a change off of 99%. But I can't guarantee that next year, there won't be, oh, let's clear out a whole bunch of old tax objection files. We're going to clear out a couple of years, and then all of a sudden, you end up with a big slug, and you end up with lower collections. So I mean, that's the challenge that can happen with Cook County in particular.
I would say, I mean, I think my opinion on this would be that, you know, if we aren't quite at 99, we're at 98.7, and we kind of have a little bit of volatility, I feel okay if we're not down to 98.5.
I guess so. I just want to confirm that 98.7 includes those large refunds that we had.
Yeah, just last year, and we are not tracking this year at all to have the large refunds. I think we're only at about $400,000 in refunds this year, which washes much better than the over 2 million we had last year. So this year, we're tracking much better. That was a, that was a very...
So at 99 flat...
One other question. And then, does that take into account the prepayments that we've had as well from the collections as well?
Yes, and we tied up the whole levate, and that's where we got the 98.7.
What do you mean? So you kind of backed out what you thought that...
And we came in pretty darn good.
Well, you look at what year?
Correct.
So it was last spring, last fall, so that the, what applied for the 2017 levated collective issue.
So our two choices, 99 and 98.5? So how many thumbs, how many thumbs for 99? One, two, three. And then how many for, I guess, how many for 98.5? One, two, three.
I'll stick with 99.
99, that's four, right? Okay, 99 it is. New growth. We've been estimating about $12 million of new growth. What did we have last year? Do you know?
16.
17. Ooh, happy dance. Things are starting to go. The AT&amp;T's going through. I don't know if that's going to hit us next year, but we're going to...
I don't know, actually, but maybe you're right.
So David, again, I'm going to put you on the spot just as a way to, you have a starting point to take the temperature of the board. We've been 12 for a while. We bumped up to 17. What would you recommend for new growth assumption?
So last week, I ran a scenario that compared, or that looked at what difference does a million dollars in new growth make? It was about $40,000 in total revenue. So just for board members, for you to, as you think about this, whether it's 12, or 15, or 20, or 10, it moves the needle a little bit, but it does not have an enormous impact. New growth is notoriously difficult to project out. And, you know, I'm comfortable anywhere at 12 to 15. You know, I wouldn't go for a big swing up or nor a big swing down right at this point if we see the economy really pulling back. I would be more in favor of a reduction there. But again, that's not going to drive our overall outcomes.
Any strong feelings on the board? What do you think? 12 is 15?
I couldn't hear you guys.
They're both able to leave it at 12.
I think we should go a bit up a little bit. Mr. said, if I should have learned, we know that AT&amp;T's going to hit, so I think we should go a bit up a little bit.
Wait, wait, 13?
13, 15, 13, 15, 15. First one, I'll bet.
Wait, what is it?
13, 15, 15. 18. I think it's going to be more than 18. He's going to help.
So 18, you... Oh, I see you did. All those 13, oh, if you're going out in the year.
Yes.
Yeah, all those years are in play.
So what'd you say? 13, 15? Let me go with 13. How do you guys, how do you guys react to that? Can you live with that?
I'm less concerned about this number. Just because it'll be a little impact.
Okay, do 13 and 15s.
All right, so it's 13 in fiscal '20, and then 15 from '21 out. That's what I'm just confirming.
Okay, teacher's salaries. So you've got, you have, you've coded into the model our labor contract. Is that right?
That's correct.
So... The 1.33 is a percentage of the 1.9?
So that's correct. So the formula out, starting in fiscal '21, is 70% of CPI plus staff.
Gotcha.
So that's, so the 70% of the 1.9 is the future.
Okay, so there's not much we can do there. I mean, it's hard coded in the contract. Administrative salaries, CPI. A little good assumption for everyone?
Yep.
Anybody? Okay. The certified salary, so...
It's classified.
Oh, classified, I'm sorry. So the 2.1 and the 2, that's in our contract now.
That's correct.
And then you've got CPI after the contract expires.
That's correct.
Are you okay with that? We have, we have a question.
No, I just had to go through it. I was thinking, wait, what are you going to say? Right, got two more? Okay. I was thinking we're...
It was retro.
Not as, not as far into the contract as we are.
Okay. Medical insurance. Now, we've been running, you know, 3% is the top end of our exposure. We've been running lower than that. You guys comfortable still keeping for planning purposes at the 3%? Or is anybody willing to go? Okay. The TRS cost shift, right? So we have been putting in our budget projections a placeholder for a legislative bill, right? That might take some of the pension costs from the state and shift it to the school difference. And we're, we've been kind of kicking it out a little bit, you know, until it doesn't happen, we keep pushing it out. And I think, Brian, you've got some update. I want to hear from some legislators.
I did. I had a, the Lake County superintendent's had a legislative breakfast last Friday morning. There was, and there was at least eight legislators there. It was really good, and most of them were new ones. And there was only two returnees, Sam Yen Ling and Boyne Bush. The rest of them, including one of ours, Mariette Allen, or Adley Allen, you know, they were, we asked a question specifically. Okay, what is the likelihood of a cost shift on a pension solution? While they all agreed that there'd probably be some type of pension conversations that are constantly ongoing, they all were adamant that there was no appetite, at least that was a group was there, for a cost shift to the local tax payer. Because nobody wants that burden shifted, I'm paraphrasing what they said, onto property taxes. So, and that was Republicans and Dems, both. They were both kind of, so I thought that was interesting. I'd never heard that before. There was always kind of the waffling, this is the first time, and it was, and they were all shaking their heads. So I'm not sure what that means, but it's just the first time I've seen that much consensus in a panel like that. So I was a little surprised, and I knew we were going to be talking about this, so I thought I'd share that. Something we've been considering for a while. This has been in play.
What do you think?
I don't know.
You want to hear it?
I mean, if I say that, they'll do something. I'm just telling you what I heard. You're on direct... And I am just repeating what I heard from the eight that were sitting there last Friday morning.
The cost shift of the code...
The minute we take it out completely, the minute it comes back...
I'm just saying.
Kind of every year, we sort of, we'd sit here at this time, we're like, okay, we don't think it's going to happen next year, so then we drop the zero in for the... And we just push it out. So I'm okay with doing that.
Yeah, you guys are both, everyone do the same thing?
I push a second zero.
Would you rather?
Okay. Anybody else with Joe? Anybody else want to just do zeros?
Not all the way across.
Oh, two zeros.
Can you remind us how much that half a percent means to our budget?
I would have to do a little... What's it should be?
Yeah, probably about four.
I remember...
And it's cumulative. Remember, we had that discussion. So that's why when you add it over each year, it's a cumulative effect. So remember, that impacts, when we push the button, it will accumulate.
Right, but in that year or a half percent, if we didn't, if we had a zero in there and we guessed wrong, it's about $400,000. I'm comfortable having a zero in the next year.
You want one zero. You suggested two zeros. Anybody else?
Be highly unlikely if we shift the pension cost, that they make it immediately. There's going to be a lot of people scrambling. It's not going to be a bearing to the profitability. So I don't, I don't foresee, if we're trying to be accurate, that even if something went down the pipe next year, that the year after, there would be some implementation that would be kind of a gradual process. That's why my mentality is, you're still pretty conservative by putting two there. But I'm fine with one.
How many thumbs for one zero? How many thumbs for two zeros?
I'm okay with two zeros.
Okay, we'll do two zeros. And then, hey, everybody okay with that?
Does that, does that first number you talked about getting bigger, does that have any impact? If you, if both of those increase, is that going to make any difference? When you talked about the first number, you're going to go with 2.0, and then maybe it'll balloon kind of like...
You with the CPI, you mean?
Yeah, instead of 1.75. Is that going to, are those going to have any impact on each other?
You mean the...
Cost shift.
With the cost shift?
They won't.
They don't interact with each other?
Okay, so no, but, all right.
Because the, the cost shift is not a percent of the revenue. It's a percent of the teacher salaries. Teacher and administrative of our...
Neither of those won't impact each other, so it doesn't matter in the top...
Indirectly, but not, you know, because, I mean, if you, if you change CPI to five, and then for all the salaries that we have keyed to CPI, those would go up, and then the TRS penalty would go up. Right? So, I mean, they are kind of related, but not...
But not anything that's going to, okay.
Okay, let's, let's deal with staffing here in a sec. The debt service extension base, so what you're showing is essentially, is that just an increase of CPI?
Yep.
So this is showing that we would continue to use D-SEB for summer projects. Is everybody okay with it? Okay? Cut it off? Okay? So what year do you want to take it out?
I would say looking at when, you know, we're going for this referendum. You know, hopefully, we have, you know, outlined a lot of projects that are going to hopefully take the place of some of the summer projects that are coming in. So whenever, you know...
Do you, is your position here contingent on the referendum passing?
I don't know.
Okay, sure.
Did it just approve two years?
We just did two years out.
So to put that in perspective, that would be fiscal year '19 and '20. Is what we look for, right, or do we do '20, '21?
So we're in, right, so right now, we're in fiscal '19.
Oh, so next summer's actually fiscal year '20.
It's fiscal year '20.
So it's '20 and '21.
But we'll capture it under the '18, '19.
Right, but these are, these are fiscal years, okay? Okay, how's the board react?
We had this conversation before. You take away 2 million from the budget, then we have to find the 2 million from somewhere. I don't know that we have 2 million that doesn't involve cutting things that we may be uncomfortable cutting, because you can't go with zero summer projects funded. Even with passing referendum, the maintenance part of it really, I mean, we might be able to narrow that for a year or two if that's what we're trying to project for now, but I don't know that that can be a consistent practice moving forward. That's my concern, especially if we're going to try to hit all of the things that we kind of laid out that we were promising to try to hit if the numbers came in with, you know, the estimates, because we started getting rolling with the possible referendum passing. That's, I mean, in eight years, we've gone through this conversation with D-SEB. There's a lot of people that are uncomfortable with it, but it's very difficult to maneuver about it, because it's kind of become part of how we do what we do.
I guess I would say I'm uncomfortable with decreasing the summer project spend that we've spent so far. And I am comfortable with having D-SEB fund those or a percentage of those. But I'm not opposed to looking at what our budget would look like if we didn't receive D-SEB, because then it would force a conversation of what would we potentially have to do without, and then we'd have to weigh those things against one another. Because I think that's, for me, that's the complete conversation, because, but mine is rooted in, we need summer project money.
I would agree. We need to keep knowing we're going to spend that 2 to 3 million every year, so... But we've got two years now, right? We say this, we've said this over and over again. If we plan for it and understand what those trade-offs are, then we could possibly achieve it, it just... I think we're going to have a difficult time doing that, planning to fund it some other way besides D-SEB.
I think that you mentioned increasing that budget as a possibility, not much too low, regardless of where the money comes from.
I think so. I mean, when I first found the board, we were at $3 million. Were you ever above 3? I mean, that...
Only in the special years when we were spending discretionary.
I mean, we, we've been at 2.5 for quite a while now, before we were at three.
Is there any way that the referendum passes will have a decrease in those needs from every state? Starting at any point?
I mean, there will be some, you know, some of the maintenance stuff is handled at the level one things, but not, I mean, not things that come up and not everything. I mean, we're, we're not redoing the pavement everywhere. We're not redoing the roofs at every school. We're not, I mean, we, we just can't do that. That, we would have been over 500 million, you know? So, the, the bottom line is, we still have to have a budget for the incidentals that are, you know, just part of doing business. You can't, you know? We're going to have a lot get done, but we're, it's, you know, 12 buildings. It's a lot of buildings, a lot of square feet. So, I mean, you can't assume that we're not going to have to maintain. That's the problem. I wish I could say we had five years, you know, if this thing passes, we've got five years where we could just dump the 2.5 million into something else and not have to worry. But that's just, if you study the facilities at all, you know that's not the case.
I'm fine with the concept, Angela, of not using the DCEB. Like, the question is where are we going to get the money from?
Yes, I mean, I'm with you.
That's right.
That's the only way to do it.
It's the only, it's the only way you can do it. I 100%.
So, here's what I'm going to suggest. We're committed to the two years. But when we get to the end again, when we're looking at the projections, let's kind of take a look at taking a couple of years of DCEB out and see what, see what it does.
The, I think the, the model that the board usually looks at, I think we have our debt service and life safety funds that are shown. So, we take a look at that. We may not see an impact on there.
We have to then basically take the DCEB and put it in on that.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's replacing that with additional spending somewhere else, that's, we, we can model that pretty readily. Let's get to the end and we'll, we'll see what we can do with that.
Investment rate of return. We're at half percent. Is that creeping up this year?
I had zeros for a long time.
Yeah, our, I, I can say that there's a couple of different ways to look at investment rate of return. Current, current yields on one-year investments are running about 2.4%. You know, we have, we've taken a look backward to say, where are we relative to our average fund balance and booked interest earnings? Leanne, I think it was 1.2 was, was a recent number that took a look at. It, which sort of mimics this kind of modeling in, in this, which is a percentage of available fund balance. So, the more recently, yields have flattened just a little bit. Chances of a rate increase over the next 12 months declined. But I haven't seen, and Gavin, maybe you've got other information, I haven't seen any indications that rates are likely to be dropping in any material way over the, at least the next 12 months.
I think that's an accurate statement. I mean, you know, a lot of our clients enter into fixed rate contracts over a five-year period. If you look back three months ago, it cost you 100 basis points premium to get into it. Now, it's down to 18 to 20 basis points, which indicates the smarter people in the room don't think there's going to be a lot of upward momentum in interest rate risk. So, I, I tend to agree with that.
So, what, what should we put for assumption?
Well, I, I, I guess what I, what I thought I heard was one-year returns are 2.4%. Obviously, we have part of our money laddered out beyond one year, and we have part of our money that is sitting more on a working capital fund.
Yeah, we have, the majority of our, of our money is sitting out one year. As Leanne and I look to change a little bit of what we might be doing to go out a little further in a different laddering scheme, to try and generate some additional interest earnings. But that's not something that we've, we've got settled or brought to the finance committee for discussion yet. But right now, we have, we tend to be more weighted toward one-year investments.
So, the one-year is returning, on average duration for our whole portfolio is returning 2.4, but we have 50 basis points in there? I, I would suggest we put in the return that we're experiencing, but not a lot of movements, at least over the next 12 months, and.
A full 2.4?
I think that rates have, rates have come up since last year when we took a look at 1.2. You know, I would be inclined to, to go, yeah, 1.2, a little bit higher. I wouldn't go 2.4, because we have some funds that also are not invested in, in one-year.
Two, what number would you use?
So, I, I might be inclined to go 1.7, 1.5 or 1.75. You know, that, that provides also some cushion for the board in the event that, you know, rates do fluctuate downward. So, or even if that were an increase over time, over a period of a couple of years, if, to, to take that in a couple of bites.
Yeah, but I think we'll give you 51% of the vote on this.
No, I, I, I think, I think Dave's looking at it the right way. I think if we want to be, you know, somewhat conservative, I guess, I, I, it's hard for me to understand how much money we have in, in same-day type funds, which isn't going to accrue kind of to that perspective, one-year money and then laddered out, two, three, four, five. But I would say that we should look at our average rate of return of around 2.4, and you don't scale back on it, and then kind of maybe just expand it off of that.
He hit, the top end of his range was 1.75.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with 1.75? 1.75 is. Okay. Let's go to the ed fund. We'll look at revenue. So, CPPRT, and this, these numbers reflect our growth over our existing, you know, there have been years it's been rated, right? The last couple of years, we've had zeros, which reflects kind of a flat CPPRT. Are you guys hearing anything legislatively that would affect CPPRT?
It's been quiet. I've heard nothing. Couple of years ago, they were talking about, but nothing.
I haven't heard of any increased rating of CPPRT, but I also haven't heard that there'd be any give back of previously rated funds. So, I would expect it to be relatively flat, unless we're assuming a big change in economy to the state.
Is it okay keeping it flat?
Yes.
General state aid proration. Now, the 100% is assumed we're just kind of getting what, what the calculation is now. And I assume by now, no, we haven't actually gotten a calculation for next year yet.
Right? No.
No, yeah. So, do you guys think keeping the 100% is prudent?
Didn't we have that extra, we're behind.
It's categoricals.
We're, we're, we're still behind, but the state in, in, for quite a while, in recent memory, has worked very hard to prioritize general state aid, which is now the evidence-based funding, to prioritize that for districts across the state. So, they've been very consistent in making those payments. I, I don't see that, given our tier status and the way the evidence-based funding model works, that there's any material increase in funding that District 220 would receive for some time, until the state injects a lot more money into that funding model. But I don't think that will, I have no reason to believe that we, that would be prorated.
You guys okay then, keeping our assumptions?
Yes.
State aid to categoricals, which transportation is a big one. Now, this is showing flat. Do we really think it's going to be flat? From like, for instance, last year, when you did the budget, you, you, you're counting your model, and you're going off this, is, will the categorical, for instance, show the extra payment we got this year?
The, from my experience, typically, without really, really good information from the state, most school districts will, will not budget more than four categorical payments in a year. So, if your question was around catching up and putting that in.
No, no, that's not.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry, that's what I thought you were, you were asking me.
We, we got the 1.9 million dollars, right?
That was an, yeah, that was an additional grant.
Additional grant.
Early job.
Right. So, we don't want to, we don't want to count that again?
No. That was a one-time scenario, that we have no reason to believe it's coming again.
Right. So, if you.
Find another one. Well, we're working on it. I like that.
If that revenue is in, because I think we said it showed up in this year's budget, right? So, if we're going next year and going off that base, right? We can't have flats across, because then we'll be counting that again. Right? So, how in the model do we accommodate that?
I don't know that we budgeted though, ever, for that 1.9.
Yeah, so.
So, I don't know if it's in the model. We have to look at it.
Right, so, so what we, what we had is.
Yeah, but to Brian's point, isn't this driven off of kind of actuals?
Well, I don't know.
Well, it's driven off of our most recent budget is, is, it's projecting out.
Oh, you're, and that, but you don't think that, that 1.9 is not in the budget?
It's in the, we put it in the FY19 budget. You are correct. I'm saying we didn't budget. At this time last year, we didn't budget.
Right, right, right.
But we did put it in, we knew we were getting it, so we put it in the FY19 budget. So, I understand what you're saying. So, we do have to take it out.
We have to take that out going up.
Along with the expense that, that goes with that. Right, so it'll.
No, the expense is still there, because what it did was it just offset our, but most of it was.
Yeah, we got it to kind of run it back.
See, if you're not familiar enough with that grant, but what it really did is it offset, most of it we put in Fund 40, in the transportation fund, because it offset the blessing costs for the early childhood. So, that was, that was the majority of it. So, if you look at our revenues, we put 40 this year, that's where the majority of it went, because that's how we did. There's some more salaries we put in it out of the fund, but a lot of it went to transportation. And that's in the budget reflected in the budget as well.
So, does that make our transportation funding appear to be inflated?
I think it'll be okay, because of our increase is moving forward in transportation, because our categoricals are now increasing, because remember, it's in the rears. So, looking at that and however we see.
But it's not going to go up 1.9 million.
Um, I, I can look at it. Yeah, I'll do that while you guys are talking.
Yeah, because we want to make sure that when we're projecting out.
I'll look at it.
We, we're not counting that we.
It's true. That, exactly. We don't want to double count that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
But it's getting back expenditures too, right? Because.
Those, we're going to have the majority of those expenditures either way. That was, that was just money that, things we put in our early childhood program, they were now, the costs are offset for. They were an additional thing that we purchased because we had those.
So, Leanne, do you have the ability to forecast what the transportation will go up by for fiscal year 20?
3%, 3%.
Are you, you're talking about the same reimbursement?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I could pull up the.
Because again, in the categorical growth.
I could pull up the, they give you a, like a template to put in your numbers. I could play around with that a little bit and show it today and see if you're comfortable with it.
Because right, the categorical growth, we would expect something more in transportation, assuming you're that out the 1.9.
Yeah, and I can tell you what we're predicted to get this year from categoricals over what we got last year. That I can tell you in the next couple of minutes. That prediction what we would.
Why, why don't we come back? We'll give you some time to play.
All right, thank you.
If it's useful, I also happen to have the state proration spreadsheet. If you want to look at historical look on prorations in categoricals, so.
Okay. Yeah, because that has changed. Okay, so let's come back to that. Federal aid growth, are we hearing anything from the federal government? Any guidance?
Flat.
Flat? So, the zeros across the board.
We just hope that it doesn't go, my understanding is it's flat as of now, but the Trump administration does choose to cut that stuff, but then that gets advocated for and gets back in. It's what I'm hearing.
Other revenue growth, things that, things like fees, I think, food service in here?
That would be part of the other, the other category.
But right now, we don't have a way to actually show what we think might be the changes in revenue and expenses. So, if we keep them just kind of the same for now, we can modify this once we get the results of the bidding.
Correct.
I'd rather keep that way this right now.
I agree.
When we get to the final budget, then we can make an adjustment.
Yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
That's what happens.
Right.
Okay. Ed fund expenditures, purchase services. So, the 2% is essentially reflect our view right now of these are CPI for purchase services and supplies. And the capital outlay, this is, this is the smaller capital outlay that's in the ed fund, not the, the big summer project capital outlay. You know, this is an, an area that historically, you know, we've been looking to try to reduce costs, right? This would be one of the areas that you would change these assumptions. So, how do you guys feel about this? Those first three line items, purchase services, supplies, capital. I mean, and the capital outlay, a lot of that would go with furniture now. Now, again, this goes back, I think, pointing out to us recently, if the, the referendum were to pass, I think you could look at that line item a little more critically. But I think that would, I think that would, that would, I think the time to do that is after April 2nd. Right, you know, you know the outcome, right? The final budget won't be determined until, you know, September. Yeah, I think it's hard to assume a referendum passing in, for this exercise.
Do you have any big purchases you're going to need to be making? Vehicles, you know, anything like that that's on the horizon?
We do have some vehicles that are in the budget that, you know, continue to be part of a replacement cycle. So, I don't see any outside of that. I mean, can we think of any significant expenses? I, I can't think of anything outside of that. We're already doing some of those.
So, how do you guys feel about these 2%? Okay with it? Or they go lower?
I always feel Brian and his team do a really good job of coming in below this number that we project out. So, if we want to talk about being consistent on a conservative basis when we're kind of looking at this, I would say, yeah, but, and that's up to Brian to meet those hurdles.
This is where we have some latitude, you know, and this is, you're right. This is where the play is, and it's minimal, but it is. And we're, you know, when we're getting down to the detail, these are the areas where we're looking, where we make things work, when we kind of get, you know, when we're getting down to it, working with the principals and trying to figure things out.
So, we want to keep the twos and we want to reduce them?
I'm okay keeping them for right now. It's all about when you press the button.
Yeah.
You can't wait anymore.
Then you might want to revisit it.
Are we okay with that for now?
Yeah, I guess the one thing I would say though, is if we do decide we want to change DCEB, that would be the first place I would want to do, so, right?
Meaning?
If we want to change, would you want to change how we fund summer projects, right?
We get to where it is.
On the right.
Right. That would be very, first place I would go.
Right.
That's, that's where we would go, except we want, continue to have $3 million or 2.5 in capital. It's got to come right, it's right here in, in this play.
You don't have that much dollars.
No, there's not much there. We did that a few years ago, and we did, we got, we even zeroed that out, and we still, it, then it becomes down to headcount. I mean, it really does.
The other thing is, sometimes, correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I might be wrong. I mean, sometimes these dollars are used to backfill some, some items that may have come out of summer projects or, or, um, things that Tom needs to do.
Yeah, it's all in, sure. Purchase services and capital.
So, so you can't hit it on both fronts, you know?
Well, this is the. Well, this is the Ed.
Let's, let's get the Ed Fund and coming up.
Okay.
We'll get it down there, well, same conversation, O and M. Correct.
That's, oh, I was already telling her, sorry.
So now to get to here.
Put the same conversation.
Before we get there, we have this line item, right, for instructional technology expenditures. We put this in there, right, when we were trying to ramp up our discretionary spending in that area. I think Matt, is that 2 million dollars kind of, we're getting kind of a steady state there, aren't we? So, but my question is, do we even need to keep this line item on the sheet? I mean, the answer would be if, if we, if we want to kind of, on a discretionary basis, inject more money into the program, then I think we would keep it in here. But if it's matured in a steady state, I think we can drop it, right?
The one major change we have is the device change at the high school, so for example.
Well, that's right, which we haven't fully learned about yet.
Which we will learn about very soon.
Only, we've only been.
Next Tuesday night.
It may be helpful to keep it for now, because of that, and then we can see where that's going, how that's going to stabilize. But for right now, tonight, I, Leanne and I were talking about this.
Yeah, we just met for a couple hours today on it.
Yeah, we feel comfortable probably keeping it around this for now.
Okay, okay.
Does it mean we have much?
So, so, so it's 2 million over the 2 million we already spent?
So just leave it where it is.
No, just flat.
So, so it's just going to stay somewhere?
2 million dollars flat.
Yeah.
I think, I think what Matt's saying is maybe it's not a steady state is what I was indicating in my comments.
The device change is a major change to the program, so it may take a little while now for that, after that bump, for it to smooth out again.
But I did a good job today trying to get you to save money, didn't I?
I think we both had some good ideas.
So.
Sorry.
So are we going to end that conversation at our next board meeting?
Yeah, next Tuesday, man. Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, so now we go down to the operation and maintenance fund. We've got the same 2% for purchase services and supplies. Are we okay doing that as a baseline for now? Not hearing any protestations, we'll keep it the same. Summer projects, now we could just eliminate this line item.
Are you trying to eat yourself or?
Maybe not.
I thought I could catch, but I didn't.
But I was surprised to see it at 3 million dollars.
Yeah, so let's talk about this. Sure, these are our assumptions. So, Penny and Joel, let you guys kind of kick this off. Is this, is this a good assumption, should we go higher or lower? What do you think?
I say it's long overdue to get to that point for the, the number of buildings we have and the amount of stuff that we do, but I wouldn't go higher, just because it would affect something else, you know, everything affects something else. So you've got to be careful, just, you know, kind of. Could we use more, could we do more if we had more? Of course, but I think that this increase is probably reflective of what we should be doing moving forward.
I do think that, you know, we may find, and I, I mean, I would, I would, I would hope that as we look at facility, at the facilities, the summer project spend as we move forward, if the referendum passes, I mean, just because there's a 3 million dollar number, doesn't mean you have to spend it, you know? And I think that, I would hope the same scrutiny would, you know, be applied to those projects that you would look at.
The Facilities Committee also had a significantly higher dollar amount that was proposed, not proposed, that was.
Who did, which committee?
Yep, it was the Facilities Committee. Right, I mean, the ask, the ask for summer projects, as we polled all our principals, was well more than what, than what the committee supported in what fell within the guidelines.
Yeah, we have a plan, it's always bigger than, we always scale.
Yeah, so there's unmet needs that are there, so.
We always scale way better.
How do you guys react to Penny and Joe's comments?
I don't disagree with them, but there's a reason why we've been at that 2, 2 and a half million dollar number for a couple years. We just can't afford, I mean, can't afford, unless we want to cut them somewhere else.
That's why you can't get all Willie, Willie.
And I, look, I do think that if the referendum were to pass, I think we have to recede this number, right? And we may, we may decide that we should adjust it. Especially if you, especially if you're going to tie it to a change in your DCEB strategy.
But I think there's a number of data points that will change come early April, if indeed it passes successfully. But I, I mean, from this purpose, I think we have to determine if that was correct.
And now Dave, based on what you were saying, I want to make sure how this number, when we look at that graph, I want to make sure that we're capturing, essentially, I think in the previous years, we captured the difference between this number and the DCEB borrowing. Do you know, is that still in there, or?
So the, the DCEB borrowing is in there, the capital spend is in there. We just, typically, we look at the operating expenses, so we don't see all the funds, so internal.
Right, but the difference would be in the O and M fund, which is an operating fund.
Right.
So is that how the model is still set up?
It's, yes.
So there's like 900,000 dollars sitting over there.
In O and M, you're saying the difference between DCEB and 3 million dollars.
That hasn't changed, we've kept.
Yeah, there's been nothing different.
Okay. Okay, so we leave that the same. Uh, our last block, transportation, purchase services, which is primarily our contract.
Contract has a 3% increase for next fiscal year.
Hard coded 3?
Yeah, rates.
The rate, per rate, route rate increases 3%.
But the routes are always a question.
Time limit, time limit.
If you look at a decrease in that expense item alone, I mean, that was nowhere near that number.
Nowhere near 2%?
Nowhere near.
Yes.
Oh, for the second year, what was?
Our transportation.
Well, we reduced routes.
That was right, so, that wasn't, that was not.
So look, this is a base, this would be a base off of the 2%, right? It's going to be a base off of the fiscal year 19 number, right? So, in 19, we did trim the routes, right? Which, you know, got us to.
But we trimmed them, but then we made a bunch of other changes, right?
That was last fiscal year.
Right.
And then in last fiscal year, that's when we added the, the technology, was in the budget too, right? The.
It was fiscal year.
That was this.
It was not 100% share.
Got it.
And that's captured in our fiscal 19 budget.
There, there was a significant spend last year on technology.
And does that, like, has it recurring costs with that, or?
No, I think, I think that, that purchase was, was pushed in last year before the end of fiscal year, so that.
At the end of 8.
But we have room to do it.
Yeah, so it did not roll into this year. Yeah, I mean, there's a, where we are right now, you know, the, the challenge has been in trying to trim routes and build efficiencies into our system, it results in a change in the experience for families. And we get a lot of phone calls about where the stop is, and it's, it's no longer, you know, 50 yards or 100 yards from my house, now it's a little further, it's still within district guidelines, but that's not what I'm looking for. So we spend a lot of time internally trying to, to satisfy our, our parents and have them have a good quality experience, but it makes it more challenging to be able to generate some of the savings that might be possible. Uh, and I think that June is really a great person to talk more about that, and, um, but I can say that there may be some opportunities to provide some efficiencies relative to routing, but that, that's going to come with some change in experience by families that may result in more communication with administration and the board.
I think the, the ridership was the other issue, you know, especially at the high school level. You know, where we, we route kids based on, you know, so that's what we're really going to look hard at, I'm pretty sure.
So look, would it be, could we ask you guys as a board, right? Take some of these moving pieces and, and just put it together at the table, right? And, and take, you know, separate out some of the one-time technology expenses, right? Break out kind of recurring and kind of one-time, you know, expenditures. And look, go back the last, you know, maybe two or three years, and then give us what your guess, what you're projecting out for the next few years, right? Based on routes and rates, understanding what the contractual rate is. Because I think there's some data here that we don't have access to here tonight.
That's correct.
Right, that would impact that conversation?
That's correct.
So can we ask you guys, I mean, we can keep the 2% in there for now, for tonight, for modeling, but let's try to fine tune that in terms of understanding what it should be?
I would, just, I'll just remind you that we do have a 3% increase, if we do nothing different.
Right, but that's what we're asking you.
We'd have 3% in it next year.
But we're asking you to understand what's different, because some of it was one-time expenditures, and some of it may be route differences. I mean, if you say I'm going to increase the routes 2%, then it's a 5% increase, right? If you say you're going to decrease it.
Yeah, that offsets the contract cost.
So we'd see to understand what your thinking is.
Okay. So it's the use, we got to determine the use and the, and the one-time expenses, and then determine that factor in, the increase in the contract.
I mean, Dave, I mean, if you, I mean, would you feel more comfortable just for tonight, until we do that analysis, you want to put 3% in there instead of 2?
I, I would consider putting at least one 3% in, just for, for next year, 2% after that. I, you know, the.
Okay, are we okay with that? Okay. Okay. Supplies, which is primarily what we think gas is going to be, fuel. Everybody throw any thoughts out here on what you think is going to happen with gas?
Okay, this is my, my, my own opinion, I think 3%. I just don't see it going, it hadn't gone up, but, but it's such a wild card, I don't know.
Yes, and I think that's why we've just tried to.
It doesn't go up 3%.
Try to cover ourselves with a conservative assumption.
That's pretty, yeah, it's a stud that hadn't happened for a while. It's going the other way, you know, but I don't, I wouldn't drop it.
You don't want to drop it from 3?
Oh, I would drop it from 3, well, I mean, I wouldn't go negative number.
Oh.
I, I, you know, maybe 1, that might be.
How about 2s across the board, a little of that? Are we okay with that?
We're in a co-op for our gas too, so, you know, we, we get a great price on it, so it's just a matter of, you know, working with that co-op. We did that a couple years ago, if you remember, we dropped that line item. We dropped our fuel cost significantly going into that co-op with Cook, Illinois.
Okay. You guys ready to talk staffing? Not a significant issue. I think we have. This is, this is your guess at what enrollment looks like next year?
Just for elementary.
Just for elementary.
And kindergarten's, I guess, left to the exact day of it is now, so if you didn't, just kind of see, it'll probably be at or higher than the current levels.
We haven't done kindergarten rollout yet, it's coming up.
Correct, next week, so the kindergarten numbers are current, and the rest is rolled up.
We just turned it to a straight roll, we didn't do anything else.
And if there was an area where the class sizes were over, then we added a section, and otherwise we condensed and made it a little smaller. Um, you can see there's a couple tight areas.
Okay, talk it through.
So we look at, you know, when you look at everything, um, you know, we can see a possibility of dropping 5, but we're, where we are right now, but I highly doubt that'll happen, matter of fact, I think it'll be flat or more than we are just, or just slightly.
Well, I didn't understand, when you say dropping, I mean, dropping 5 sections?
Yeah, if you look, if you, this, this enrollment projection page shows a drop of 5 FTE in the general ed program, general ed, not county special ed or anything like that, over the current year.
Oh.
But it, it's so tight in some areas, um, this is, you know, again, without kindergarten.
So these numbers here reflect 5 less sections, sections.
Will you remind us, I know that they, the highlighted.
Oh, yeah, the highlighted yellow, yeah.
The yellow and the green, what do they mean?
If there's a line that's highlighted in yellow, it means I dropped one section in that particular grade level for that school this, from this year to next year in a projection. And if it's green, I added one. So when you take all those pluses and minuses away, it's a, it's a drop of 5 FTE.
Is that 5 number I hear somewhere?
No.
Okay, okay.
You just have to count.
It's 9 yellow lines and 4 green lines.
Just, yeah, just, um.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Just like a line across.
9 minus, 9 minus 4.
Yeah, 9 minus 4.
So when you look at some of the areas where, take a look at Huff alone, and then you take a look at, you know, some of the, some of the other areas. Sunny Hill's always a wild card, remember that the spec, the general ed sections need to be lower than, or the failing one need to be lower than the general ed, so we got a couple, couple situations there that looks like particularly in first grade. Actually, those numbers are off there, in first grade, it should be 21 and 20, not 26 and 15, so that, sorry, I forgot to make that change. In first grade at Sunny Hill, it should be 21 and 20, so no red right now. Um, but in third grade, Cynthia's very concerned about that general ed number, she's got, um, 3 special ed kids going into there. I mean, sorry, that, that 24 counts for special ed, but it's, it's a, it's a higher number for kids that are challenged as far as socioeconomical problems or things like that. So Sunny Hill's a little bit of a wild card, I'm concerned about Huff. You know, you can see that there's a few other areas that, you know, 4th grade at Countryside, Austin's concerned with 4th grade at North Barrington, very concerned actually, talked to me about that. With, you know, those numbers include those 5 special ed kids, so he's, you know, right at the top levels there.
So that's how it was this year? How did it?
Um, well, the 3rd, the 3rd grade, yeah, there's 4th, there's, um, currently, there's, um.
There's 4 sections.
4 sections, and it would drop down to 3.
Oh, because the requirements.
But 4th and 5th grade goes along, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just did it straight by numbers and guidelines, but that could be an area where we, we struggle a little bit.
Did you keep all of the kids that are, um, that, you know, petitioned from other schools, did you keep them?
Yeah, they're right, right now they're rolled in, like I said, they would be staying where they are.
That they stay.
Yeah, that's another.
Which is an actual better.
Another thing that I kind of do in the beginning until I know more. Uh, so another, just a big picture, Rose, you can see is dropping, you know, it looks like it's going down almost to a 2-section school, if you look over at Rose. Um, they've, just straight enrollment dropped from 63, about 63 students from this current year to next year, so Rose is the biggest drop.
They, they lost 60 students?
Straight in a roll-up. But then you look at Roslyn going up about 37, so Roslyn, you know, Roslyn's going up now. Grove was dropping as well.
Did Grove have a really big 5th grade or something?
Uh, yeah, yeah, they had, they had 5 sections. So they rolled out a big class, and it's kind of been going that way, it's been trending there, because those big homes over there, and some people are.
Grove, Grove was just, was that big as well.
Yeah, but Grove is dropping now, coming back down.
And with Huff, I mean, what?
Well, Huff just doesn't have any space to make more than 2 sections, so I, I just put them in there at 2. Um, they would have to make some decisions over there, you know, you would have to put, you know, some, some things on a cart or move programs without saying which program.
There's only one, Mary.
There's only one district program at Huff.
No.
We all know that's not a popular option.
It looks like we have 2 sections of all the kindergarten too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, with, with the growth, with the numbers at Huff, it was just, you know, you, or you could look at, you know, split levels, that's not popular either, splitting up, you know, multi-grade programs.
You could take kindergarten, kindergarten kids off campus.
Yeah, so there's, there's options we can look at, but, yeah, right, right, I mean, we, there's things we can do. But the way, the way it is now, I, the reason that Huff stays red is what, instead of other schools changing, is just naturally, there's just no, not a whole lot of flexibility, unless we do some things that are a little different.
So if I understand, because we're going to shift to middle and high school this year, right? At elementary, you did a straight roll, it shows minus 5, but you prefer to keep it flat and use those 5 to address issues as they come up from this one.
I would.
Okay, what about, what about middle?
Well, middle and high school, I think we, we have a little room.
What does that mean?
Um, about 2 or 3 in middle school.
2.
2, probably 2, 2 at middle school, and about 2. Two, probably 2, 2 at middle school and about 2 or 3 at high school.
When you say, meaning you can reduce those?
Drop, reducing.
Yes, we could. Again, remember, this is-
Without, yes.
That's correct.
Our first, at our first brush at it, that's where we're, where we are.
Station was the middle school, last year we read adjusted Prairie, and I think there, Station this year would be, where we know there's, they're probably overstaffed looking at next year, so we probably have a couple of reductions there. And in the high school, again, I think there's a big senior class going out, less eighth graders coming in, we just know, and we have to work on that, Steve.
Steve believes he has some room to come down with this.
So, am I, I'm just, I'm just trying to seek some clarification. If, if we keep the FTE, the contingency at elementary, are you suggesting that we might be able to take 4 or 5 out of the budget?
I think that depends on what the board wants to do with those 4 or 5. I mean, there's also, you know, just, just one thought is the foundation program for STEM has, you know, has been talked as growing. Now, would we do that, would we not, I mean?
Okay. You have teed up the issue.
I think there's, well, I-
There's, there's some up teeth.
There's some programming needs, right? I mean, there's some things we've been holding off.
And it really is at the elementary level.
If we, if we are able to, you know, keep our staffing flat overall, and if we know we've got some FTE that we could readjust and meet some programming needs, that's what staff would like to do.
That's what I wanted to say.
Now, it doesn't mean that we have to do that, if we just want to stay as quote, then we could reduce staffing. However, we believe there are probably, you know, we haven't had, I'm going to say resource allocation opportunities for a while, you know, as since I've been here, never really had much of an opportunity to do some of that stuff.
It's not a reward stingy.
Yeah, I know, it's the bottom line, right? We're just, we gotta work with it. But if we do have an opportunity, there are some programming issues that, you know, the elementary principals would tell you they want mental health support in their buildings. I mean, they say it all the time, whether it's social workers. Yeah, I mean, that's, they've been asking us for that.
Asked for years and years.
For every year, five years, every year. I mean, they just need one more support to help kids.
And we look at sometimes doing that by moving some things around and we're just talking in that general direction, but it's, it's a need. And math support and intervention is also a need.
Yeah, that comes, elementary, this is all on.
All elementary, so shifting that down is where we might need.
You say more mental health support in elementary schools, right? So they have some now, right?
It's slim. They have some.
Does every school have some?
Some more than others, depending on the programs.
And, and different levels of support, you know, we have, I think, traditionally over the years, Barrington has staffed psychologists over social workers, Beth can speak to this better than me, whereas in a lot of districts, it's more the social worker, um, you know, that gets more connected to the student model.
Do we have a staff psychologist at every elementary?
Um, not, not every, that's the other thing, it's, you know, some have psychs and some-
It's based on student needs, it's based on a program needs, based on the IEPs.
And what that school has asked for over the years, so.
We have a psychologist at every building.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have a social worker.
That's right.
We do not have a social worker at every elementary school, just to work with the general population. We have it for special ed, but we don't work with the general population.
Okay, so I misheard that then. So you, you, you aren't looking for more mental health support with regard to, like, therapy and services like that?
Regular ed, for regular ed kids.
Regular ed, special ed.
So, social work services is what we're talking, so.
Yes.
Social work services.
Day to day. For general kids, not special work. Day to day support.
We have to meet those minutes, we're required to, we do it for any kid with an IEP. I'm talking about regular ed students.
To try to, I mean, in some cases, to try to keep them out of special.
It's like early intervention, just like you would do for reading or for math, early intervention is best. And so what we're saying is that we have psychologists at all the buildings, they do evaluations and they offer support to students to meet the, that have IEPs in order to meet the IEP minutes that are indicated on the IEP, but we don't have social work services at every building, so. And, and social work services could, what we're saying is could meet the needs of the general education students who tend to, because their needs aren't met, we tend to have to find them eligible for special education in some way because we're, we're not doing the early intervention. And so our numbers, we feel like we could help students earlier and do more preventative work as opposed to being there after they've already been identified.
There was a, at the Ed Red Dinner last night, John, Brian, Penny and I were there. This was part of the thing they were talking about, which is schools are, which is regular kids, schools are the spot where they are seeking out help, right, for emotional needs. And, and, and so, but, everybody understands we really don't have the dollars or resources to do it correctly.
What about our partnership with the Lexium Brothers? I know they have a staff member in the high school, do they, have we ever asked them to put staff members in elementary schools?
Those are situational, you know, scenarios, what they do is they do referrals and then they try to get, yeah, I mean, what happens is they all do a screening or they do referrals and then if the kids choose to take them up on their services and use it, their insurance kicks in and a whole bunch of other things happen. So it's, it's kind of-
I think what Angela's talking about is the agreement we have with Alexium Brothers.
Right, and they, they're funded independently and they-
Yeah, um, it's, it's not the level of service though, it's somebody, no, it's not the level of service that we would need if it were somebody who, you know, was a district employee. They offer services to some of our students who are more already, they're either, you know, returning from hospitalization or they're kind of at that level, at the high school level, that's more where that comes in.
You know, Emberraging Youth and Family Services does the same thing.
Yes.
You know, they provide a lot of direct support for kids in middle school and high school primarily, but, but still, that's kind of situational too, it's kind of, you know, by referral.
Sometimes that contractual is more expensive than if you're going to just have an employee too, with some of the contractual employees that we have, we have, you know, so, it'd be in our best interest to try to have people within our district.
So look, eventually, I think we would probably be wanting to tell on this, right?
Oh, sure.
Let me, just kind-
I'm just giving you a chance.
Yeah, so, but let me just open up to the board and get your reaction, right? I mean, to, you know, what's being presented to us is potentially maybe up to 10 FTE reductions as a result of rolling through the enrollment, keeping 5 available as kind of a contingency at elementary and then maybe reallocating based on program needs, the, you know, the 4 or 5 that might free up in middle and in, in high school, how do you guys react?
I'm, I'm okay with it, I'd like to hear the ideas though, with the reallocation.
And we're, we're in a, kind of a break in the midst of that now.
Yeah, we're in the middle of that, so we definitely can address that, but we didn't want to do it unless it was even possible. If it's possible, then we'll definitely do it.
Everything's possible.
Yeah.
But you know, well, not always.
It's like a party parade, isn't it?
Not if the numbers aren't shaking out right, it's not.
Right, well, we gotta get to it.
But then that also has to include, and you said it includes a contingency, right? So it wouldn't be an additional contingency that we gather the past.
No.
So for the model, if we were to do-
You were to kind of just flat count, and then we get back to you on how we were thinking about some of the allegations.
Or we could reduce headcount, or it's not comfortable.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. What do you want to project, do you want to project out flat or do you want to reduce headcount, project out and reduce headcount?
I want to start flat.
Or you want to wait till you hear?
Start flat?
Start flat. Yeah, I'd like to hear what, you know.
Yeah, we're not committing.
Yeah.
No, I can't. Okay, so how about, we'll commit to flat in the model, is that, I'm assuming, Dave, that'll be easy to do.
A flat is much easier to than some of the other options.
Well, sir. But I think the board, board will need to see some justification to what it is.
Yeah.
So I talked to-
Oh, sure, that's right.
Okay. Now, do you, you need time to compile this?
Yes, sir.
How much time do you need, much time do I need to fill? 10 minutes?
Probably 10, I was, while you were having that discussion, I was putting some items in. But it probably only 10 minutes would be great.
Okay, so you do your thing.
He's gonna talk long enough.
Right, and then I'm gonna ask him a hard question.
Okay, excellent.
So, if we were to take out DCEF, right, if we had to reduce up to 2, 2 and a half million? What are you gonna do?
2 and a half million dollars?
Yeah.
Staffing, it has to be. I mean, we've done this exercise in the past, I mean, it's, it's definitely staffing. It's class size or programs or, I mean, it's something. I mean, you, you don't get 2 and a half million dollars out of supplies and purchase services, it just isn't there. You may get a half a million out of that, you know, just by maybe flattening it out to zero. It definitely staffing. I mean, like I said, we've done this before, about three years ago, four years ago, I don't remember what it was, it's staffing.
But couldn't you pick up a half a million in purchase services, maybe, you know, quarter of a million in transportation, maybe a half a million, I, it, it doesn't need to be a static pool from somewhere, right?
Not static, but, but to get to that type of number, I mean, when nearly, you know, 75, 80% of our budget is salaries and benefits, that's where you get to the big number. Now, well, you're right, we could, we could definitely trim on the edges on some of those things, there's no doubt about it, but eventually you'd have to get to some type of staffing. That's where the big, that's where it goes quickly, you know, it's like certified staff, it's, you know, 75, 80,000 a person and, you know, classified, it's about a little bit less than half of that. So then that's where you, we went through this exercise a few years ago and I, we'd have to pull that back out and look at everything.
So we'd have to take, we have to go not be flat, right?
Yeah.
And then still, we have to dig.
We would look at everything, to your point, we would, which is what we did before, if you remember, we, we cut, I'm trying to remember now, off the top of my head, you know, you put me on the spot here, but I remember, we, I remember we cut some out of O and M, we cut some out of curriculum, I remember, you know, we, we did that, we went along and looked at purchase, oh yeah, IT, that's right. We did headcount there, significant amount of headcount in reorganizing our IT staff. But we also cut some of your budget too, Matt, we cut some of the software, we cut some different things. So, um, in fact, I think most of that was out of IT, including headcount and stuff.
Some of the headcount was reality.
No, no, we reorganized.
We did do the reorgan, major reorgan.
We, we cut everybody loose and backfilled, we changed jobs, is what we did.
But from a, from a dollar-to-dollar standpoint.
Well, big savings.
Big saves, but we did eliminate everything.
Correct.
I, I thought we reallocated some of those employees into a different-
No.
Not at all.
We got rid of at least 12 plus one administrator.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that, that's right, that's correct, did that too. Trying to remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, we've done other stuff, I mean, you start digging that deep, right? Historically, you start, I mean, you can save money by scaling back some stipends or go collect.
Yes, staff development.
We've done, we've done that.
Staff development, components, I mean, there's, yeah, we could look in every bucket, we would.
Do we want to ask Brian to come up with some stage savings up to 2, 2 and a half million dollars?
When was the last time we did that, 2 years ago?
3.
Three years?
3.
I'm, I'm all about looking at this, you know, and making sure that we're being, you know, is, using money as efficiently as possible, but I also think that, you know, it's a different situation in April depending upon what happens, so, I don't know if we, you know, like sending Brian through the process of looking at all of these areas, I don't, I mean, I, I know we have a budget that we need to be, you know, working through, but at the same time, it, it could be, I mean, it could be a, we're still gonna have to sign some money, I'd have.
A 3.
But maybe he's not looking at cutting 3 million.
Well, you can give him a different number, I mean.
Right.
You could have it staged, right? Give us a million, you know, million 5, 2, 2 and a half, you know.
I mean, I think we're just gonna at least be spending 2 in summer projects every year, at least, regardless of what happened.
Because, I mean-
Well, you could have listened.
The only things that are gonna, things that are gonna get done are the things that were on the list, right? So if there's some, I know this is like a crazy thing, but you know, like the bridge on the high school that happened.
It was a failure.
It's not gonna happen again, we hope, you know, but-
But something else will.
Whack-a-doodle things, yeah, good God, but, um, I mean, we still had, we still had many things on that list that weren't addressed because they were things that were higher priority. I mean, I think we, in my mind, we need to start by defining how much we want to spend and then deciding, you know.
Well, look, if you're, if, 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 if the cuts are just based on trying to be efficient with our spending, we should do it now, right? If we only want to do the cuts in response to some, some sunsetting DCEF, right? If the referendum passes and we're already committed to 2 years of DCEF, right? Then you don't need to go through that analysis for a while, right? So, so the question is, is what is it we really want to do? Do we want to just look at what cuts look like to see if, because look, and if you're gonna cut, to Brian's point, if you're gonna cut anything significant out of the budget, the only way to do it is staff, and the only time to do it is in March. Right, if you wait till after the referendum, you're essentially saying you're gonna kick it another year.
It's also gonna be cumulative.
57 plays for next year, right? We've already approved that.
Sorry?
We've already approved the DCEF for next year, so.
But the thing's, a bigger question is, is we just talked about staffing, right? So as a board member, I would like to know, if we hypothetically can eliminate-
Yeah.
10 employees.
Right.
But potentially reallocate for different programs, I would like to hear about it and the costs associated with it, then we can make that decision.
I agree.
I tend to agree with Penny, you know, from a DCEF standpoint, we've already approved it, and even if the referendum passes, the summer projects still need to take place over the next couple of years irrespective of, of what unfolds, so, but, but, I mean, from a, from an FTE standpoint, we need to know what those 10 employees will look like or how they will be allocated.
Absolutely.
So do we want to just focus on kind of those 10 and the reallocation of those 10 for now?
I would suggest 5 of them leave as contingency for next year.
I know, I know.
Just, Mary said it twice, I'm just saying again, so I really think it's 5.
But that's different than asking, that's different than asking you to try to-
I'm not saying size, but-
Oh, sure, that's a different exercise.
I'm confused, I felt like we were talking about figuring out a way to not use DCEF, but now we're back to the 10 FTE, did they?
Two different things, two different ones.
That's what I thought, okay, okay, just want to make sure.
But that's what we do overlap in that we, we want to spend, we want to operate as efficiently as possible, and that we can save money. And you can find money in these other places besides staff cuts. We shouldn't be doing that.
I think we should be doing that regardless of whether we're talking DCEF conversations.
No doubt about it.
And I mean, I'm hoping that, that to your point earlier, how frugal Brian has been in his funding, so, you know, on some of those items anyway.
That has been happening right over the years.
That's my impression.
We come in under on some, what do we do, supplies and purchase services.
But, you know, always a worthy exercise when we're looking at, however, I'm mindful of your bandwidth between now and April.
It's true.
Right. I'm just thinking.
So we should be doing this whether we're DCE or not, right?
Well, we hope, I mean, I hope he's doing it up there.
Do you wanna, do you wanna put a number out there to say, Brian, try to find cuts of X?
Do I? Well, I heard the amount for DCE is like two and a half million.
Yeah, two, two and a half.
Or it's, you know, we're talking about quarter million here, half million there, it doesn't have to all come from staff cuts, in my opinion. I don't know, we talked about busing, we haven't really talked about any specific savings from the new system. Talked about rerouting, maybe changing bus stops, but in my opinion, you can do that with or without.
We're gonna do it anyway, we're gonna do that anyway, I just don't want them much.
So maybe there's more there somewhere from the new system, I don't know, with the data from the.
From the writers, I don't know.
Yeah.
Won't be too far, won't be two and a half million.
No. But, it'll all add up.
So, okay. I, I think we're all in agreement that we want to look at those five to ten, how they would be, be there, right?
We will definitely do that.
And, and I'm just trying to read the group, is that enough of a focus, or do we also want to ask Brian, in addition to that, to try to identify cost reductions up to a million or two million dollars?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
But what I would like to say, and maybe
We visited April.
One of us can write this on our calendar somewhere. A year before, we have to think about whether or not we're gonna issue DCE, so we're gonna ask Brian to look at it, so we have an understanding of, okay, if we don't do this, this is what this needs to work, so that's just.
I would say it has to be more than a year out. I don't think we can do it right now, but.
No, a year from whenever, we would have to approve them next time. Does that make sense?
Be a year from now, probably, because we're gonna start the conversation, it'll be a year from now.
Is everybody okay with that? Well, we are. My suggestion is that, you know, Brian, you guys might want to just start thinking about that.
Yeah, and you don't need to wait, you know, a year.
Always in the back of my mind, always, always.
I think you're doing it ongoing.
Yeah.
It is, you know, we, when we do the budget every year, we don't, I, we don't, we don't do a zero-based budget, but we definitely, just like John and I were talking about something today, you know, just something with staffing and how we're using title monies, and, you know, that is constantly ongoing, and how we can use the resources differently or more effectively, right? And evidently, Matt and Lee M are having that conversation today too, so, all of us are always, that, that can definitely occur.
So I have a question, so, if, let's say you have an, um, contingency of five, the FTE, right? What if, what if you get a child that needs substantial services? Who needs, that would trigger the hiring of another teacher, and you had already spent this? Is that something different because the child requires significant services? Or would that be something to come back to, say, I need another option?
If you remember, again, that happens sometimes, it has happened, where we've added, say, hey, we got it, we got too many kids in the primary self-contained program, we gotta add a section, and we've done that, so we'll take, and, you know, one of those contingency and use it for that, that's happened. However, anytime we add special service staff, for instance, uh, special ed teachers, or maybe a related service, we do, we are able to file that through our grant and get some type of compensation for that, it's not a hundred percent, it's not one for one, but it definitely has an impact on it.
Yeah, anytime we've added F, or needed to add FTE and we didn't have any contingency, we come back.
We've taken it out of this, we've always taken it out of whatever's allocated.
We've, we've said that we had to, but.
I was more inclined about that special situation than opposed to, we need to add another section.
It happens more with the aides.
Yeah, it's usually aides.
But you, you've come back just before, so.
I know, I've come back just before, I just didn't know how much of that's, um, offset by.
It's so unpredictable, because we don't know who's that, it, it is unpredictable.
It was, I'm not talking about the regular classroom situation.
How about special ed? And related services.
Sometimes that's how, contingency is spent though, right, but sometimes.
Sometimes we reorganized too, we've done that.
And every year, we downs, if you guys will remember, we always downsize the aide, um, group, and then recall back to the level we need, sometimes, and, and actually, we've cut, this year we went down how many, we didn't recall back, was it five? So, we've dropped a couple, you know, over the last couple of years, we've brought that specials, or that classified staff down, for sure.
We brought, we also will take, maybe we don't need the aides, because the needs of the kids change and we may hire a teacher instead, and we offset that, so, it really is so dependent on the needs of the kids, and so in your scenario, Penny, yeah, I mean, we just have to, those IP meetings are going on now, those annual reviews, so we're trying to get a good handle on what's happening.
Like, we won't hire two aides if we hire a teacher, because the, the cost difference is something different.
Okay, so while we're waiting for Dave, let's switch to our other discussion item, which is some of the referendum communication material, see, we've got hard copies here of kind of revised wording on the priority sheets and the FAQ sheet. So I don't know if Brian, Sam, you guys want to make any comments on this, or how do you wanna?
Well, I, I'll start, and Samantha, if I miss something, or feel, we've been working on this
Definitely there's a line to let us.
since the last board discussion, and, I mean, we, we went back, looked at all of our notes, we were, I also got some, um, I shared a draft of some of this stuff with Rod Wright, who worked with Unicom, you know, who have, he told us he would help us with this initial stuff based on the survey results. So he reviewed this stuff as well, looked at the priority list as well as the FAQ, so his, you know, he reviewed all those and kind of gave me some very specific suggestions based on what he read from the survey results that the board generated. So what we did was, again, we were wordsmithing some of these, you know, priorities, I'm looking at the single priority sheet here, tried to get it to a point where, um, it kind of hit those targets. Rod also suggested that you put it in this order, that's what he suggested, based on the survey results, so there was a purpose to this, put the safety and security at the top, uh, the classroom, updating the classrooms in the second kind of tier, and then the other two down at the bottom, he thought people understand the third item, you know, maintaining that infrastructure, I mean, that's pretty straightforward, pretty clear cut. And then finally, if you remember from the survey results, Rod pointed out to me again, that this was not a, you know, item that, I think people are passionate in those areas, support it and understand it, but in general, it isn't always something that generates a lot of, uh, overall community support. So that's what Rod said, and so he just suggested, you know, that's why we kind of laid it out in this way, and then put some talking points under, underneath, there's a lot of detail under each one of these, okay, that if we're talking in the community, if we're, go like if I'm doing, I was at Sunny Hill this afternoon, I'm going out to every staff, and I went through this with them this afternoon, and told them, hey, this is all pending board review, but kind of walked through these, and I talked through each one of these points and some of the, a lot of detail in underneath each one of these.
Did it flow well? Do you think they reacted to the?
Oh yeah, I think they fully understood it, um, it, it seemed to flow really good, I thought.
They didn't have very many questions, I, I mean.
It made sense, right?
What do you guys think?
Do, um, this is kind of silly, do we need to spell out physical occupation?
I'm just asking, it's probably not a bad thing to think about.
And then, um, I debated whether, just when I read through it, did the, the, um, BHS students' PE and wellness rooms be there, or down in number four? I can, I can argue both ways, but.
That's a significant instructional change at Barrington High School, it's significant, adding learning spaces. You know, it is, so that's why it kind of showed, shows in both spots, that's just my, and I explained it differently today when I, like, when I was talking with the Sunny Hill staff. I said, this is during the day, the lifetime fitness curriculum and what we're trying to do with kids, then I got down there, it was more in the co-curricular arena, you know, before and after school weekends and all that kind of thing. I was telling you what it did, so it doesn't have to be both places, but that's kind of how it flowed in the conversations that I did, that I've done now. By the way, last week I also showed this with the district leadership team as well, uh, you know, with all the administrators, told them we were walking through it as well.
And maybe it sounds silly to them too?
They offered a few suggestions, and I think we clarified some things here, they did. That if audience was a little more critical, well, it was fine, it was welcome.
Any other comments from the board on this sheet? Dave, keep working, we're talking through some of the referendum.
I had one more, but it's more on the other one than, than this one.
Okay, so let's go to the other one, so then this is the FAQ document, right, which is intended to be on the website. Brian, you want to make any comments on this, or?
Well, this was another one, now, I think I've seen.
And by the way, I should point out, Brian had sent our, I think, Brian sent a live link, right, to the, to the, you know, the sandbox website, right, it's not live.
Not yet.
And it was sent out again, an email to us tonight, so we can find it easier.
Yeah, I just sent an email before the meeting started, with the link.
So, so this is the FAQ, I want to focus on this.
Janine, can you pull that up?
I'm trying, I'm so sorry.
Do you want me to send you the link?
No, I just.
No, don't do it yet, because otherwise we're gonna be confused, let's focus first on the FAQ, and then we'll look at that.
So the FAQ, um, originally, when we drafted the FAQ, we were kind of using, looking at other districts and what they had done in their FAQs when it came to referendums. However, once again, I got a lot of significant feedback from Rod on this one, again, I think he, he suggested putting some of these key items right up front, that he believed resonated with the, with the voters when they did the survey work. And so, that's, there is a, there is a reason for some of this order here, um, and felt like that these were the critical items that people want to be informed on, and would have questions on, um, if they went and viewed this document. And he thought it was, now, the other thing about this document is, uh, we can edit this, we can, as we start to have community conversation, I say, we, it's everybody in this room, probably, you know, we can go back and we can clarify something, we can tweak it, we can edit it, we can add to, you know, if there's something that is just not resonating well with the community, this is, should not be a stagnant document over the next two months, it should be kind of evolving, I guess, you know, based on clarity and things we hear as we're talking with staff and community, so.
I only got one point on this, and that was the page three, I think, where it says, if the referendum does not pass, how will it impact my taxes? And I think it's all accurate, except the very end, it says, well, overall, there would be a reduction in taxes paid to the district, individual property owners' tax bills are dependent on a variety of factors unrelated to the district levy, may go up or down by varying amounts. Well, that, I feel like that's not really responsive to the question. I mean, it's saying, if the referendum does not pass, how will it impact my taxes? And then we say in here, it may go up, your taxes may go up or down, well, I think if referendum didn't pass, most people's taxes may go down.
When I, when I wrote that, I, I wrote it that way because someone could do a big addition on their house, and then their taxes go up, and they read that and say, well, it said that it was gonna go down.
But that's not really the question.
That's, yeah, but that's not the question, so.
Well, how about this?
We could clarify it, be more specific.
Yeah. So, I think, and to your point, well, the overall, uh, well, there would be a reduction in taxes paid to the district.
To the school district, correct, you assume that a homeowner is asking this question?
Right.
So.
And you could say.
Which is how it was answered, to say, what's happened to your, if you ask me what's gonna happen to your house, to your taxes, I, I don't know. It depends on other things that are going on.
But if you were to say, but Dave, Dave, if you were to say, look, your, the impact would be, your taxes to the school district would be reduced, and then just put a parenthetical, you know, just, or a comma, and just say, assuming, um, stable EAV.
All things equal or something.
Yeah, I mean, because I, you know.
We can do that.
Well, we also don't know.
Yeah, sure, we, yeah, we can rephrase that.
Yeah, we don't know how will a successful referendum impact my taxes, I mean, we give a, you know, twenty-seven cents a day assessment, so, you know, it's, it could, you know, put a, an addition on the, I mean, you know, I feel like we're, we're pretty to the point with that, but this, it seems very.
Just with the right caveats, huh?
Yeah.
And you could caveat both of them, to your point, right?
I mean, you gotta treat them both the same, because right now I read it and go, oh gosh.
Let us work on this one, I understand what you're saying, I think it's, I think we ought to clearly state in the first sentence, if I'm not hearing incorrectly, your taxes will go down, I mean, because they will.
That's to the school district.
Yeah, the school district.
That's the key part.
Right, yeah.
Because look, if your taxes to the school district go down nine to ten percent, right? Your overall taxes, you know, four to five percent, right? So, but a four or five percent difference in your taxes could easily be made up with a prior year adjustment, or EAV adjustment, or a bunch of other things. Right? So your overall tax bill may still go up, I think that's the key.
That's, that's what I was saying.
Right.
But I think if you just start, like, you know, it's just, it's just, you just treat them equally, I mean, however you want to do it. I lost my page, oh here, so I mean, if you say, how will a successful referendum impact my taxes? Debt, uh, well, I guess you can't start with that.
You could just say, debt represents approximately nine point six percent of your current school levy, which will not, you know, you see,
Yeah, yeah.
You know, in the elimination of this, of, of, of this, of this payment, you create a reduction in the taxes that you pay to the school district.
Yeah, I wrote it, it is anticipated, you know, following that sentence, it is anticipated that taxes will go down as the current debt is paid off. At, at something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think you just, just be straightforward.
Do you know why the question, what the question about looks like this place where it is?
Is it toward the end?
No, it's actually on page two, the bottom, because to me, I was giving maybe a fit better.
Rod, that was Rod's suggestion, and I think he thought it's not, he just thought, well, it's important, it's, you don't lead with it, because remember, we originally we had it as the lead.
No, I didn't know.
Yeah, we had, and also, we do, we are gonna have it as a separate tab on the website, you know, the actual ballot question, so.
You're saying that you go down, no?
I'm saying that you go further back.
Oh, further back?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But what I, yeah, what I, you know, I don't disagree with you, but then as I looked at it, because it's an interesting question, you look at the flow, you know, it starts with kind of the improvements, prioritization, you know, what exactly is in it, you know, all the kind of just descriptors, and then this is a kind of a pivot question, right, now to the referendum, right? So now it says, what does the question actually look like, and then everything that follows, is then the follow-up question about referendum and the impact on taxes.
So I guess, I think the next question is just as good of a pivot question, when was the last time Barrington two twenty passed a referendum to a degree?
Yeah, you're right.
You know, and, and this is, I understand why we want to show it to people, but it's not as informative. In my opinion, as all the other.
Do you want to just move it to the end?
It's gonna have a separate link anyway, right?
It does, so you're like, look up there, see, it says that, the FAQ is like the second tab, and then there is the ballot language, which is.
We also would be making a standalone print document of the FAQs, I think, we're.
I, I'm just saying, I'm fine with Mike's suggestion, move it further, because it's got its own link.
It does.
It doesn't have to be a pivot, doesn't have to be the end.
I don't think it's informative.
Okay, done, moving.
In a new way.
We'll move it.
Moving it to the end. Next?
Okay, there's no rhyme or reason on any of this stuff.
That's fine.
It's a good question.
He's asking why, you know.
You don't have to move it. No, it's moved, it's moved. Other questions?
I had a concern with the projects that we listed, um, expand, so expanded parking lots at these particular schools, but that's contingent on, you know, some traffic, you know, tuck into IDA in some cases and things like that, so I'm, I don't know how to qualify that a little bit, but because the very last question, and maybe that's where my bigger concern is, I think it says, we anticipate that everything's gonna be done, and, um, so I had a problem with those two things in combination, if that makes sense, and if we've got it here in print, people are gonna say, well, where's my, my improvements at Grove, because it was listed here, and I, I think maybe there should be a qualifier of some sort there.
So in that parking lot.
I mean, that include the specific.
We don't list the schools, maybe, you know.
It's that simple.
And we have parking lots.
Because there's no guarantee.
What's the, what's the legalese there?
Truthfully, I think they're all, let me just give you an example, the middle school, the, we get rid of the malls at the middle school, we're gonna have to go through the Village of Barrington in the same regard by putting an addition on those buildings.
But these are bigger, I mean, if Sam is trying to get a deal with IDA, you've got to deal with, like, you know.
You're right.
I, I think that we've all known that, you know, especially with the flow of traffic in those schools, that that's been a, a safety concern that many people brought to us for years, and we knew that it wasn't a significant investment.
Well, how about, if we just add in that, in that whole, a parenthetical that just says, pending approval by IDA and appropriate villages.
That's fine.
It's true, and counties, I think, counties.
Yeah, and county, applicable counties.
Like countryside's gonna be county.
Applicable counties.
That's fine.
And if I remember right, Sunny Hill was actually not included.
Yeah, I was, I remember we said we were gonna try to take that out of.
Summer projects. But it was gonna be done in conjunction with these.
I think as long as it's a parenthetical.
No, I thought I just almost said we got it by some.
Because it may sneak in there.
Because Sunny Hill may be earlier, which is fine.
It might move up, if one of these others doesn't happen.
Right. I also had a concern with the next bullet, adding classroom space at all elementary schools, I'm not sure that that's, we are gonna create space for that, but I don't know if we're gonna be moving brick and mortar at every single elementary school. I know we talked about it, but, um, so I don't know. And maybe just say, add classroom space at elementary schools and remove the all.
Well, we're really adding the sensory interest.
Well, we're really adding the sensory rooms. I'm just not sure, so.
Instead of "add," we could say.
You guys can, you guys can vote me down, but I'm still gonna advocate, do we need to add it at every single school? It's gotta be, I know we've got some feedback that maybe it's not as effective, but we don't know. Are we gonna be knocking down bricks?
Maybe it's not worth adding.
I think, right, question is more, are we adding sensory rooms or classrooms? That's my question.
No, she's asking, her question, her observation's different.
Well, I, well, I, what I'm, what I'm, it is, but it isn't, because I'm thinking it would say, "Add sensory rooms at all elementary schools."
Yeah, and she's saying she's not bought into that.
I'm not, you're doing. At all, I'm not into sensory rooms, please, let's be careful here. I'm not into sensory rooms, I just don't know that we're gonna, we're going to be.
Gonna add it every school.
Adding square footage to every single elementary school.
Would you agree?
We might be adding more square footage at one than others.
Would you agree that we would be adding a sensory room to every school?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, that's not the issue.
Adding sensory room space.
Exactly.
Yes, so.
It might not be.
New square footage at every school.
But when you, if you just take out classroom space and add sensory rooms, I think it's fine, 'cause it doesn't say we're adding bricks and mortar.
Rod suggested that we did not, that we not use the word sensory rooms, because most of people don't understand what that means.
Okay.
He did suggest that.
How about, "Create space at all elementary schools."
I said, "Use the word create" instead of "add."
I just don't want there to be any ambiguity.
It might be an "add," it may not be an "add."
Is everybody okay with just changing "add" to "create"?
Great.
Yes.
Be okay, Samuel.
Yep.
Anybody okay with that?
Any others? Here, let's go through this real quick. What improvements are needed at our school, anything? What community members were involved in identifying and prioritizing? Nice summary of the process. Um, the projects are supported, anything there? What does an updated classroom look like?
The only thing about that one is, as I read it, again, I'm sort of thinking about that person, and we've been asked this a lot, "Well, what if my child doesn't thrive in open, flexible spaces?" I, I'm just wondering if we should, if there should be something in there saying the needs of all children. We talked about.
We did add it in the, in the question after, if you read the answer, we talk about the individualized instruction. I think that's what you were talking about.
Gotcha, okay, yes, yes, yes.
Where, you brought the next question, you said?
Yeah.
Instead of here.
Okay. How will updated classrooms improve student performance? Okay. Was that satisfying, your question?
Yes, sorry, I wrote my note. That other one.
Okay. What would the question on the ballot look like? We agreed to send that to you back. When is the last 10-220 passed a referendum to upgrade facilities?
The 115 million, it should agree with the first one as well.
Yeah, we changed it there and didn't change that one.
Yeah. Changed that. How will successive referendum impact my taxes? If the referendum does not impact, how will it impact my taxes? We try to do a little bit of a mirror there. Why is placing a referendum question on the ballot essential to fund these score improvements?
Do we need to, I mean, we say, on that one, we say the district invests two to three million. Do we need to qualify it typically, or historically, or?
What word do you want?
We said per year.
Some years we've only done 1.5, you could say typically or something, just. Not, not bill, but.
Just put the word typically.
Anything else on that one? How much money does the district have in reserves? Why can't it be used? I'd like to let you back work.
I like the next question a lot. I don't know where it should be, but it's a good.
What, the maximum?
Yeah.
Is, is, you do like this?
I think so, it shows that, you know.
You're being conservative.
Yeah, we're doing less than half, or about half, by the way.
Yeah.
Of what we hypothetically.
Do you think it's got down?
I do, I know where we started.
But that's a perspective I hadn't, but that's a perspective I hadn't considered, so I appreciate that.
One of the things Rod told me when I was talking to him, he said, on that topic, he just said, "You need to say, you have a master facility client that has $500 million worth of needs," and the board took a conservative approach of only asking, he told me that. He was kinda telling me some talking points that, that he thinks will help frame that, Mike, so that's why, that's what his comment to me was.
That's an interesting fact.
Okay, what is the breakdown by school level? Okay, high school, middle school, the elementarys. Do we need to say EL entries plus ELC?
Yes. I'll get it set up on the one.
I think the ELC's, I think it's a little something in there, but it's not much.
It's not, but you, you don't wanna ignore them.
Okay, we'll have that.
When were the Barrington 220 schools built? 1940.
I love it. Some people don't know this.
No, I have to tell you, there are somewhere, I think I have it, somebody gave me a copy of, of school board notes from the 1950s, when they were talking about building growth. She might even find those somewhere. It's kinda fascinating, actually.
Hey, Brian, before you go on.
Similar conversations.
They weren't destroying those, but.
I gotta take us back to policy meeting for a minute and go back a couple of questions.
Yep.
Word "policy," the policy, PM policy should be capitalized.
Which question?
The district main, the question is.
The one about the referendum, where we talked about the 25 to 40%, you know, board policy should be capitalized. I'm with you on that, I like that, I agree with it.
I like that sentence first, too, there, but.
So, I just have a question about, the one about when the schools were built. I thought we were saying that the auditorium seats were from 1946. Am I not remembering the date?
48.
48.
Yeah.
So, they were built before the high school?
But it was built over, like, a three-year period, I think, it was pieced together.
Finished in 1949.
Yeah.
A little unclear, I think.
It was built in, like, sections or something.
I think maybe because it opened in 1949, so possibly the seats could have actually been.
Manufactured.
Made in 1948.
Okay.
But I can double check.
Yeah, you should make sure that's.
Plus, the school was, it was staged, I know it was.
Wait, hey, Dad?
I've seen some construction photos, and it was staged over, kind of pieced together over time, that early stage.
Is it cold out?
No. I told my kid, "Just wait outside, I'll be there eventually." Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drive him home, I'll text, let me know where you guys are, because I'll come back here still.
Okay. Good luck, it's getting warm.
He looks actually going to take a cup, actually.
And milk it. Okay, anything else on our school list? How soon will construction start? Would you say we'll start over here, which is probably the best?
I'm not talking about the.
Yeah.
We should be careful, we don't, we don't want it to linger.
Correct. Is enrollment increasing or decreasing? Flat.
Is that, is that an accurate statement? I know we've talked about this a bunch, with enrollment. And I, and I am assuming the assumption it's actually slightly decreased.
That's a good question.
But relatively.
I just.
But I know, I think it's like.
When was it done?
It's like 30 or 40 students.
Two years, yes.
Nah.
Two years ago, no?
It's been pretty flat.
Going back.
I was just talking about going forward, I understand.
What I'm saying, what I, what I think about is it relatively flat, and if I'm a taxpayer, where it's been, where it's going, and, I don't know, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have any mis.
Yeah, no, this is just, this is just saying relatively flat for the next five years. Now, if you, if we wanna add something about, you know, historical trends, you know, it's probably come down a couple percentage, you know.
I don't, when I read the question, I think it, I think it alludes to what we want it to say, but I don't necessarily know.
What do you, what do you mean by refreshed, it's refreshed?
Well, right before we started the, we actually told you that, process, we had a new one.
So, that's the two years ago?
That was part of that whole analysis.
Because in two years, you know, lots changed, too. I hear a lot of news about people leaving the state. So, the demographic, the, the impact is, is ours.
So, how, how do we wanna change this?
I don't see a suggestion, it's just an observation.
Okay. I think, yeah, I don't know how to deal with it, I mean, the question, what's gonna happen in the future, which I think is all, is all question people want to know, I think. Now, we could put a chart, we could put a chart of kind of our enrollment.
But if I read, but if I read the question.
Yeah.
Is enrollment increasing or decreasing? To me, that's more of a historic question, though. You can show a tab, and over the last five years, we can show that. I wouldn't wanna predict it going out, other than what it says here.
I, I see your point.
The other thing, I don't, I feel like in all of the reasons that we're doing, we're doing it, none of them say it's, none of them imply that we need to get more students.
No, or an increase in roll, not at all.
I think it's, but I'm hoping.
I mean, the only other thing I can think of is you could do, like, you know, you could show, like, the last 10 years, right, of enrollment.
We've got, we've got the chart, I know, just like, just what's happening to 10 years.
You think that's a clearer picture?
Yeah, I think it takes more picture, sure.
That's fair.
Yeah. Yeah, wanna see we pull that together?
Sure, I know we have it, we have a chart. But I, I just, I'm, I'm just, I just raise a question more than anything else. I think, you know, my only problem with putting charts and stuff in here is just a lot of information already. And that was my general.
You could put a link.
Observation, is this is a lot.
How about this?
Put a link.
That's fair, that's fair. We need to do a link. Grab something, look at our Lexmusical.
Yeah, I mean, and this thing's can be, again, we can add it this, you know what I mean? We can put it on, we can take it off, you know, you can, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we may not need 10 years.
I was thinking five years, actually, I said 10, but I'm thinking five.
Yeah, I'm thinking five, come on.
True.
Because I have heard that question, so I said, "I ask." I don't see an increase at all. Not necessarily.
Still overcrowded. Okay, how is the district's current financial? So, I mean, if it's 22 consecutive years, we should put 22 consecutive years, right? And if it's, whatever it is, on the AAA bond, let's try to look that up, to be accurate. Can private funding be used? Are you guys okay with this question?
Actually, they did a good job. I think it's a good question.
Yeah, we can get that locked, we can get it locked.
Just don't try private under.
Somebody want, let's feature player, we're on tape. Anybody who wants to give us $185 million, the school board will look at and service you.
Yes.
Accept the donation, right?
Depending, we need to do it from standards, public standards. Okay. How will taxpayers know that the funds would be used for these projects and not other things? That's a good question, good answer. What happens if the community does not support the referendum? I mean, that's a good answer, right? What if the cost of the working CTE estimates? That's a good one, and then the ballot, we'll handle that ballot question. Everybody okay with this? Now, Gavin, you think, you think this is too much?
Well, I, I mean, I think some people will read it all, I think most people will.
Yeah.
Go one, two, three, four, and say, "I'm done." That's why Rod strategically put the first few items at the front.
Now, is.
You're exactly correct.
To that point, in the webpage, is it set up as all text, or can you collapse each question and then expand the answer to each question?
No, it's just, right now, it's just one long thing that you have to scroll down.
I mean, I don't know technically how easy that would be to do, but I mean, I guess that gets to Gavin's question, where if it's too long for people to page through, if they can look at just the questions.
I see what you're saying.
Right, and then they can click the questions that are most important to them. And then, and then it expands down, and see that was.
So, we'd have a list of probably 15 questions.
Yeah.
And then you click the one you wanna read, and then it opens up. I think, I think we can do that, Samuel, can't we? I think, we'll see.
Maybe Gavin, you think that would make it easier, Gavin?
I'll see if we can do that on Block 4.
Yeah, we'll have to check with SchoolWires and see if we can.
I think it's still good that you have them all, though, because it's good information.
It is.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I could link it to a Google Doc, 'cause in the Google Doc, it was on the side, you know, well.
Yeah, okay, do finish.
Let's talk to Andy tomorrow, or.
Whatever it is.
The other, the other good reason to do that, though, is because.
Get bookmarked.
I can imagine.
Yeah.
This list may grow over time, too.
Yeah.
As we start to get questions from the community over and over, we might wanna consider adding that question, and refer frequently to this list.
And there's a, there's a tab to ask questions to, to the site.
Yeah, so let's go through the website that they've got. Okay, so, so you have the overview, which has your priorities, and then that list that's in the FAQ, right?
And we'll add it back based on conversation. We talked about.
So, this is, this is the first page.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay, and then what else we got on the side? FAQs, we went through tax impact, what's tax impact?
Is this gonna take me somewhere?
Yeah.
So, taking a tax impact.
The table, right?
It's got the tables.
So, it's got the tables we talked about.
Ooh.
Okay, nice. And then you've got the current applicable tax rates. I still think if you can add to those descriptions, like if you go where it says, I think it should say Glenview High School District 225 with elementary district 34. So people understand what you're doing.
I agree.
We can add that on everyone. Write that out. We got room there in the box.
Make it look more.
Does that make sense, Samantha? So we'll just add in those descriptors.
And so, and then on the source, you guys, you like it better with the 220 at the top or 220 at the bottom?
We can do it either way.
I know.
We can flip the chart, too. We could start with the others higher and put us at the bottom.
That's what I'm saying.
I kinda like it at the bottom. But it makes more sense. But if you don't scroll down far enough, you're not gonna see it. But they'll be looking for it. And I'd like them to see it at the bottom. If we were in the middle, it would be the highest at the top.
Yes, good point.
If we weren't at the end, it would. It would be the top.
What do you guys think? Bob? Matt's saying yes. I'll trust Matt on this one. Why don't you do the reverse sort of thing?
It's fine. Actually, I have a slideshow. I have it the other way around.
Will the other school districts? Yeah, but I've always made the other school districts so they get mad at us.
So.
That's all right.
Just in the spirit of identifying the high school and elementary districts, do you think it would be worthwhile to identify the others as units? Because we.
Even us.
Are very educated with these things, but my next tour neighbor might not be.
Either unit or even, I mean, how about just K-12 or pre-K-12?
Yeah, they understand that better. We should add it to Barrington also.
Yeah, add it to all of it. Pre-K-12, and then you see the combination.
Okay, we'll add that detail. Get that, Samantha, so I don't forget tomorrow when I ask it.
What's I should do this? Okay, what's next? School plans. Okay. Is your concept to do this for every school?
Yeah, let me talk, go ahead. Why don't you, Samantha, go ahead. We were talking through this.
So, yeah, this is just an example of the high school. But basically, you can see, these are images from, I think, Google satellite images. And at the top, there's two, like, modern classrooms and safety and security upgrades. We didn't number those because it's hard to identify where exactly on the picture we would put those numbers. And the rest of the projects are numbered. And we would do this for every school.
We thought about using this. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to see. So. Go back, so one is the new Fine Arts Auditorium. And that is, I just, my eyes aren't good, that's right there. Is this, though? Is that the DLR drawing?
No.
So you're just, ah, thank you.
We did a Google Earth.
So you're just showing it's gonna be in kind of an empty field kind of thing?
Here's the problem I ran into. When we took a look at the DLR sketches, when we landed on the master facility plan, we, it was a static sketch, is what it was. And in the referendum thing here, we did not incorporate everything that was in the master facility plan. So it kind of, when we started looking at some of the buildings, it gave a real skewed look at which items would actually get done.
Couldn't DLR just take off the stuff that we didn't do?
Well, we could. We have to pay them to do all that. We haven't done that yet. We have to pay them to do it. We can do that. He'll do it if I ask him to do it. We've not done that. So we created our own through the Google. So I didn't know if the board wants that, we can do that, but they're gonna have to go back and create those as we incorporated in the plan. Because that's not the way to do it, right? Am I explaining that correctly, Samantha?
Right, the layouts that they have on the website aren't exactly how the buildings are right now.
Okay, so what do you guys think? Okay, thumbs up? Not sure?
I kind of tend to agree with you. I think we paid DLR to do all this work from a master facility plan and strip out a few pieces of information. I don't think would be tremendous, but that's just an assumption that I may make.
I just didn't want to spend the money unless the board wanted me to do it. I'll do it. I don't know how much it is. I don't know. I'd have to ask.
What do you want to ask?
It's more from a timing standpoint than anything else. If they come back and say it's another 30 days, like that's.
Yeah, it's more like too late.
I'm not sure on that either. I'll just have to ask. I haven't asked.
Well, yes, let's just see.
I'm hurt to ask. I think that there's a three on a baseball field. I forget which softball field. Should that three be in the parking lot?
No, because there's gonna be more parking lot there.
Yeah, see, that's why it gets confusing. It gets really confusing if you don't have that DLR drawing.
I don't.
It's just confusing.
It is, that's what I mean.
I appreciate what you were trying to do, though. I do. I guess my request is not to be like Mickey, but I just think that all of the descriptors should agree. So, who's the words? Modern classrooms, and we've got updated classrooms.
Yeah, we need to go through and.
We have. We wanted to, yeah, we'll get this spread out. Just didn't know what direction to go. We had one already. We did look at one. It was a station or one of the middle schools.
We looked at station.
It looked odd.
Because they had a huge gymnasium on it. That's part of a phase that's not in the 185.
Right, you gotta take that out. DLR should be able, it's always decent to put things up.
Take out, right?
Yeah.
But what's underneath it?
Well, or. I know. What I was trying to communicate, like, when I, that was the idea, is could they just freeze those things that we're not doing? And just let the ones, because when you go on it now, I think when you click on it, it kind of blooms, if you will. I'm not using technical terms, you know? But, I'm sorry?
Just with each.
You know, and only let it do the things that we're doing.
I just think it'd be easier for me.
Maybe a conversation.
Back to our initial conversation with some of the traffic post stuff. I mean, that's obviously subject to.
Well, if you put in a new auditorium, though, you're gonna change the traffic, right? It will, it has to change.
Yeah, but that's why you gotta see that drawing to.
Right.
Be able to understand. What else we got on the website? In the information sessions, you guys have set up the dates, right? We got that in Brian's updates.
Yeah, we didn't put them on here yet. We're gonna verify these tonight, then we'll add them. There are three dates: Saturday, February 23rd, 9:00 a.m., Barrington High School; Monday, March 4th, 9:30 a.m. at Prairie; and Wednesday, March 6th, at 7:00 p.m. at Station.
And based on the survey we did, we got at least two board members in each one of those? Might I suggest, so we can be prepared, is like, you know, because all of our schedules tend to change, right? Like, a day or two beforehand, send out a reminder, this community session is coming here. And you may want to say, you know, based on the previous survey, I've got, you know, Gavin, Sandra, and Penny can make it.
Can we circulate that now? Because the two days that I offered up, my schedule has already changed. And I just want to make sure that we have proper coverage.
Why don't we do, why don't we do, why don't you send the three dates around? We'll all respond based on our schedules. And then maybe you can take each three, these are the board members who responded, yes. And then we'll try to make sure we firm it up like the day before. We all tend to have schedules that change unexpectedly. Okay, videos?
Are you thinking that if we don't have two, then we would go back to the drawing board on those dates then?
Let's call it seven and get there, let's see where it goes.
Or we start twisting board members' arms.
I'll say, hey, I gotta have one more.
All right, thank you.
Okay, where are we at? Videos. So this is where you would load the videos.
Correct.
So you get the Fine Arts one up.
Would you like to see it?
No, not right now.
Flexible seating, we went ahead and put that one up. Because we think we're gonna get questions on that. That was from both of them. We don't have to put it there. We just thought it would, it's gonna be a point of conversation, I believe.
Okay, what else we got?
That's it. We didn't.
Yeah, okay, so hold on after videos. Ballot language, we know about that. Voting. So this would be spots to vote early, okay?
We've got the county websites, clerk sites.
Okay, and then the ask a question?
Somebody asked about the early voting. There's the early voting question.
First and last name, email address, phone number, question.
And it goes to Craig. He gets it.
He drinks a squirt of straw?
He's the answer man at least.
He's not here.
Oh, is that what it's doing? Oh, yeah, I see it now.
Is he responding directly back to the person that posted? Or is it going to be posted elsewhere? How are we gonna handle?
Direct back.
But they're not gonna really be posted, are they? I mean, this is coming into someone's inbox.
Right, but I mean, to Gavin's point, at some point, I mean, some of these questions would be down, right? I mean, should we be asking people, is it okay if we posted your question on the website?
Or, yeah, you can put their response, like, wow, that's a great one. Can we share?
Yeah, do you mind if we share it on the website?
Why wouldn't you just make it in some form part of your FAQs? If you received it enough times.
He's gonna collect this in a Google Doc. I know he is, so it's gonna be easy to. He's gonna collect this.
If he gets like the same question over and over, maybe we'll just add it to the FAQs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That's a plan.
Because you wouldn't have to put so much steam with it.
My guess is some of these are gonna, we're gonna point them to the FAQ. I don't, I'm just guessing, but I'm not sure. We'll see. We'll see.
Multiple tech lab. Okay, and then that's just a link to the 220 site? Is there anything that is missing? We talked about, anybody remember suggesting that is missing? When would you guys, when are you thinking you want to make this live?
Probably next week.
Soon, prefer. And we can add, we'll just leave things blank if it's not ready yet.
Okay.
You know what I mean? We'll add it, because there's so much there already. I'm getting a lot of questions. I wish I could just point people to it.
Did you put the registration to vote info as well as early voting?
Yeah.
It's on the voting there.
I can't read that far.
Yeah, it's on there. Register to vote.
So is you're still trying to build some of the, perhaps some of the maps and some of the videos? That, that.
Add those as.
You can just, okay. How do you guys feel? You guys okay with letting this thing go live next week then? Once I get it to.
Monday. Because we got edits to make based on this conversation.
If school's open by now.
It might be.
If you're worried about it, is there any difference between Monday and Tuesday? Where you have one less button if you have light? I mean, I'm fine and I trust the judgment, but if we're worried about it.
Do we meet next week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
That's good. You want to just wait until the board meeting?
I'm fine. It's fine. Yeah, I didn't think.
And you can release it with your board.
That's fine.
Okay, that's the plan. I assume by my line, we're all okay with what we've seen so far?
We'll take one last look at the website next week. We'll try to get a majority of the stuff on there.
Looks good. Looks good. Any else on the referendum stuff?
Yes, one last thing. Last week, I got an email from Laura Davis from the League of Women Voters in the Palatine area. Includes Palatine, Rivers, Rolling Meadows, Barrington, upstate and suburban. She invited us to come to the Barrington Library to participate in a election forum. They're gonna have three agenda items. One is the Barrington Hills trustees. The second one, they asked us to be the middle, the school district referendum. And then the third item is the village of Barrington trustees. And so, if I had told her, I would ask the board this evening if they want to participate in that and get back to her. So, they'd like to have us.
The trustees election?
They're gonna do, I believe, some, just a forum. She said a forum, so.
Our school district has an election.
Yeah, we had the same thought. Brian asked, but they didn't.
They want the two village trustees and kind of the referendum.
As events council, we'll do a candidates forum.
I agree with you.
I just tell them, hey, you want to do a referendum, you gotta take the forum.
It's a two for.
The board wants me to do that, I'll be happy to tell her that.
Well, I mean, I'm grateful that they invited us. Because we'll have people there to see the other two groups, who we may be able to inform and help.
So it's Barrington Hills trustees and.
Starts at 9:30.
In the village of Barrington.
9:30 to 10:30 is the Barrington Hills trustees. 10:35 to 10:50, so we get 20 minutes, or not quite 20 minutes, 15 minutes, school board referendum. And then 10:55 to 11:45, the village of Barrington trustees. That's their current timeline. So we'd have about 15, 20 minutes. I think kind of go through and summarize what we got ready.
You can make it, what's the date?
Saturday, March 16th. I'm available.
Just before St. Patty's Day.
Just before, huh?
Yeah, not after.
So, would we have panel people to talk?
I guess my suggestion would be, and I'm certainly open to what every board members would like to do, is I have a slideshow that kind of summarizes some of this stuff, and I'm gonna be doing, I'm gonna have it down pretty good. But I'm doing with staff. I could do it in less than 10 minutes. I know I can. And then we just open up for questions whenever, I mean, we don't have a lot of time. So I think I'd have to go through it quickly, have one handout, probably this priority sheet. And do quickly, run through it, and then just open it up for questions. Board members could be there. I wouldn't want to do it, so I'd like to have.
Well, I'll come before. Does it start right?
I'm good either way, but.
No, no, we'll come before.
Is that 9:00 a.m.?
Starts at 9:30 a.m. And it ends at noon. I'll, I can forward this email, or I'll copy the board on it when I reply to her. It's at the library, Barrington Library.
And the other discussions will be lively as well. Okay, anything else in the referendum? Let us take a look at where our financial projections are trending. Draw a rule clip.
So what I did was roll in the change in new construction. Caution, interest savings, transportation, purchase services change, transportation supplies change. And then the big impact was dropping out the revenue in 1.9 million in state funding. To adjust that out, so.
So you were able to do that?
I was able to do that.
Good job, good work. Way to be agile.
Can you make it any larger?
Yeah, and Angela's probably not coming back, so is, are we gonna get a copy of this?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, so then.
Send it out.
But not until we're done yet.
I just want to make sure it gets sent, and I'll just tell her that we'll send it.
This is the projected year-end fund balance for operating funds.
So next year, I'm just looking, it looks like it's a slight positive for next year. And then we start running deficits. So, it ain't sustainable. Now, we've seen this dive in the chart before, and oftentimes it's been worse.
How much, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading the numbers.
Can you have, do you have the other chart that's got the revenues and expenditures going out? Where you see the actual surplus, there you go. And you gotta make that a little bigger.
A lot.
All right, so. I can make it big, but I'm not sure which pieces you'll.
Yeah, so go down.
Then you can't see.
Going down to the surplus and deficit, right, so.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to get that header in there so you can see what, which row is which row.
Go down to the next one.
Yeah, don't worry about the header.
Right, the next one.
I think it's right here. This is the operating surplus.
No, you don't want more.
The next one, one goes right there.
There you go, down there.
So this includes other financing sources and uses, which is not fully reflective of a lot of.
So the 326 is next year, right? The 326 surplus? Column D is 2020. So that's next year. So then you go like minus 561, you know, then, yeah, then you're 1.6, then you're 3.1, 3.1. Now, obviously, if CPI goes higher, you're in good shape. If we did, you know, Gavin, if we go back to that 1.75, can you run that quickly, or is that, I don't want to.
You know, I did, I couldn't remember the exact amount that Gavin had mentioned. But what I did was put in 1.9% in these out three years, to see what the difference would look like. So, and if you give me a minute or two, I can actually put in 1.75 at whatever, whichever weird years you would like. But dropping that a little bit was a $600,000 reduction.
Per year.
That's ending fund balance, so.
Oh, that's huge.
Yeah, so that, but that would obviously, that would have 1.9, if we want 1.75, that would have, uh, you know, more significant reduction.
I mean, this is going to show long-term. We're going to have to look at it to a few million.
What was that item specifically? Wasn't that investment income?
Sorry, I, I just couldn't quite hear you.
The 1.75?
That was the CPI, um, what the assumption was around CPI. The CPI for out years, which influences the amount of, uh, revenue that comes in from local property taxes.
Didn't we talk about a 1.75 increase from 0.05 investment income?
Uh, so I, I did an investment income from 0.5% up to, uh, 1.75%. So that actually is included in here already.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Is that DCEB rolling off? Oh, okay.
Did we keep it in?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, so I, I will tell you, you know, I was, was working a little bit on the, the, the DCEB and what some of that would look like. I'm not confident in how the debt service fund, in terms of the timing, I need to just confirm that with PMA in terms of how it got that reflected here, so. I'm not really.
But if you go back to these numbers, right, I mean, I, I look at it and I say, you know, long-term, we're going to have to take two or three million dollars in expenditures out of the budget. Right?
Assuming, if assuming all those assumptions play out.
Yeah. So you know what? You may not, you may not have to do it immediately, but I think thinking about how you're going to do it is something that you can't lose sight of. And it's, it's worth trying to start thinking about what's next.
I think, I think it's, I'm not trying to be Pollyanna here, but we've seen a chart like this before too. And so we're early enough and we're in the black and we can start making some tweaks along the way. That can help us lighten up a lot.
We have a lot of conservative estimates in it.
Exactly.
But same thing we were saying before, if we can save money, we're going to do that.
It's either cuts or, or, or control.
Expenses.
Control the growth in expenses.
The, the trick is just, you gotta cut a little, whatever you have to each year to keep it in balance. You know, you don't have to cut now to make it balanced five years from now, cause things will change.
They will. Those assumptions do involve.
But each year, you gotta throw this thing up. So you ruin the balanced budget. Can you go back up to the top again? Have you had a chance to verify those revenue assumptions? Cause that can have a big factor or two.
Local revenue?
Yeah, the local revenue.
I think that, um, and try to roll in the, the, the assumptions that we've, that we've had in terms of CPI growth and, um, in construction and those are the, that's what drives the, the vast majority of the local revenue.
It's all driven on CPI.
It's not. It's the thing, long-term, technically you did, cause you got the, the four counties in the prior year adjustments. It's not always. So that's why you, you gotta go through that, that one spreadsheet to verify it. Cause it's really easy to have those revenue numbers jump a couple million dollars, one way or another.
But we've also seen it go in the other direction.
That's what I mean. Go up or down.
You can go either way.
We've seen it both ways. And some years it's actually gone down.
This is Julie over there.
That's the last good test.
This is the last board meeting in here.
I was wondering.
We're gonna make it through tomorrow.
That Windstar talent, you're gonna, you're gonna feel a little flapping.
I'll have a beer.
That's funny. I've sat there before, I know.
So are we, are we okay with this for now? Does everybody, does everybody want to change your view on rest of this, going after cost reductions?
If you can summarize correctly, if you need to have it on your mind. For the next two years, you seem like we're on the right track.
I would, I would suggest this, Joe, it's a good point. I, we'll, we'll, from a staff perspective, we're going to have to have a short list of things that we know. And in the meantime, to Mike's point earlier, and you've said it a couple of times, you know, if we know some opportunities present themselves, we'll, we'll do it now. We're not going to wait. You know, we, we'll look hard and see if we can make some adjustments and, and we'll go from there. I, we'll have to, we will do that.
Yeah, we've already started looking at a couple of categories.
Any other question items? And we don't need anything close, right?
Nope.
You guys ready to adjourn?
Sorry, cars.
So, I'm sorry, I need to step up a second. Will you, once you figure it out, will you give us a, an updated copy of that so we can see it?
We'll put that in my Thursday update. We'll just, yeah.
What's our next touch point on this?
For the road.
When do we need to have something?
Well, you don't have to prove anything until September.
I understand. We're gonna need.
But it looks like right now, I mean, I think part of what we got to figure out is, I mean, immediately, the, the next big deadline is what are you going to do for the rep? Right? If you have to do it. So we got to talk about these 10, how we're going to do it, or what impact that has on the target. I'm not hearing out of this conversation that anybody thinks that we need to give Brian the direction to say, you know, let's reduce 20 feet. So if we're not doing that, right, then I think that the rip list kind of comes out of the conversations we're going to have.
It's mostly attrition. We got a lot of retirees.
Right.
We've got attrition here, that we can manage this for what we're at today.
And I think your, your information you're providing on the transportation at some point will be to, to help us revisit this if we need to.
And, and closer look at if the revenues are coming in, right? How that's going to in fact impact the revenue itself, so.
I think too, after the referendum, I think that's the next opportunity where, you know, there's some conversation around maybe some of those numbers there. And what, what we choose to do as we build the budget.
Any other questions? Adjourn? Ready to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in fear of adjournment, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.